Just the two of us.
That'll go.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Carlisle Select Board meeting for Tuesday, September 14th. We are going into executive session. May I have a motion to do so?
I move. I should get this up, sorry.
Do you want to look at this one?
I think I can do it really fast here.
Okay.
That the board entered into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Paragraph 6, to consider the value of real property located at 338 Bedford and 201 Concord Street as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position, and that afterwards, the board will return to open session.
I can't hear you, Nathan. I think you're muted.
I was. Second.
All right, we're going to do a roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
Reed, aye.
And David Modell and Luke Oskalillo are absent at the moment and will be joining us later. All right, well, the motion carries, so we will resume the community portion of this meeting, the open meeting law portion, after our executive session. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We are beginning the Carlisle Select Board meeting on September 14th. My name is Barney Arnold. I'm the Chair of the Board. And with me is Kate Reed, also a Select Board member, and David Modell will be joining us shortly, and Nathan Brown is with us remotely, and Luke Oskalillo, the other board member, will be joining us later this evening in person. I'm going to quickly review the agenda. We'll begin with community input and a brief report from the LEPC. Then the Town Clerk is going to take us through a request to remain a single precinct. We have a joint meeting this evening with the Finance Committee. Welcome. Thank you for being here. We will, after the joint meeting, we will have a hearing, an open hearing, about the Community Cable Needs Assessment Study. And after that, we'll do some appointments and resignations. We have cemetery deeds. We will take another look at the Select Board goals and presumably approve them this evening, and then our Town Administrator is going to go through his goals, and then followed by his Administrator's report, liaison reports, approval of minutes, and the warrants, and then adjournment is, our goal is to adjourn at 10:00 PM. So with that, I'd like to entertain anyone who would like to offer community input this evening. And if you are with us remotely, if you can indicate either via your chat or some other way, is this showing us what we're seeing? Is that the total number?
It is not.
That are on? No, it's not? Okay. So if there's someone that would like to offer community input, raise their hand and they'll come to the spot. Okay, you could raise your hand or use the chat function.
But I mean, raise your hand on the bottom bar, use the emoji.
Gotcha.
Because that brings your picture to the front, so that we can see you.
Thank you.
No one has their hand up at the moment.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the LEPC update. That committee met yesterday morning. The Board of Health reported that we've had just a few cases in the last few weeks. There's no percentage increase in what we were seeing before that. No children have been recently diagnosed. Those that have been diagnosed with COVID have all been adults. Carlisle Public School was, we're very happy to hear, have had no cases since the start of school, and they've had a good start to the school year. The COA is going to be offering a flu clinic on October 1st to drive through for Carlisle seniors. And I'd like to offer just a special thank you to our Fire Chief, Brian Soros, and the firefighters who went with him to New Orleans to assist with the disaster there and help the folks in New Orleans. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to our Town Clerk, Peggy Wang, for item number three on the agenda. Thanks, Peggy.
I'd like to add that during the pandemic, we had zero deaths with or because of COVID.
Excellent.
We haven't had any.
Good.
Right.
Yep. So I think you've all received the packet for the forms from the state, so that we can sign off and get approval to remain one precinct. This is something that's done after the federal census every 10 years, where towns and cities may want to redraw their precinct maps. So we start off as one precinct, and we can remain as one precinct. Barney was in meeting this morning. I was telling her that the threshold is related to population, and the population has to reach 6,200 for us to break off into another precinct, that we have to. We're current, with the federal census showed us at 5,237, which is interesting to me because our own personal census shows us at 5,396. But I think that that's because we have people still on our street list that have moved, and we can't take them off because they haven't given us permission, but they've probably not, most likely didn't fill out the federal census. So there's a difference there. That's only been, it was an increase from 10 years ago, about 8%. We were at 4,852 in 2010. So our population's growing, according to the federal census, grew to 8% between the 10-year time period. I know that you had the little map, but I brought the big map if you really want to see it. And then I have last year's map here if you want to see it.
Can we look at that map? Is it any different from the open space map? This is the 2020 map.
Orange is precinct one.
That's us, okay.
Yeah. It has those population numbers on this.
Yeah, 5,237. Okay.
That's the official map?
That's the official map, apparently.
Peggy, would you just look toward the screen with that map, just so folks there can see? Oh, wait, other way. Oh, you have to go.
Yeah, no, turn the other way with your back.
The other way. Your back to the screen.
A little more. Can you see?
Yeah, there you go.
Right there, perfect.
There you go.
That orange is the precinct.
Yeah. Thanks, Peggy.
Do you like the 2010 color?
Oh, yeah, what color was that? Oh, that was a purple, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to, if I could just ask a quick question. You know, so in the packet, the map, I think it's the same map, and it's blue, and all it shows is that the precinct is just the town, right? Or am I missing something?
Nope, just the town boundary.
Okay. Just confirming the Carlisle boundaries. Okay.
Yes. Any other comments that you wanted to make, Peggy?
Oh, it's my recommendation to remain the one precinct.
Okay.
So I move that the Select Board vote to remain a single precinct pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 6, and hereby request the Secretary of the Commonwealth to tear a single precinct map for the town of Carlisle.
Exactly.
All those in favor, now, since we have Nathan remotely, we have to take a roll call, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passes.
I'd like to sign these two papers today. You don't have to come into my office.
Sure. Will do. All right, let me just move this on to the next item on the agenda, and then I'll sign that. All righty. Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you.
So let's move to the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. Jim, do you want to come up and start your meeting, or use one of these here if you want?
Maybe I'll start here, and make a few remarks, and then, how many people of our committee are on remote? I know Melissa's there.
Lynn Lipinski is online.
Can you show more people? Can you, Brady Bunch?
The gallery?
Melissa and Lynn.
And you, you, and then me.
I would just, I would like to call a roll, so we are officially in session during this segment of your agenda, but I'm not sure who, I know we have four, so we can do it.
We have four numbers total on the call. Here, two there.
Okay. So let's start with the roll. Dar here.
Lipinski, Lynn Lipinski here.
Mike Maron here.
I think she said that. It was just hard to hear. Okay.
Hard to hear you, Melissa.
Okay, is this any better?
That is better. Thanks.
We may have some others join. There's different stuff going on tonight, but as we can all attest to. So let me just start with where we are in our process. We hope this is just an informal conversation. We'll have others, I hope, as the budget season winds on.
Brines on.
Well, that depends how much you enjoy it, David. Didn't you love it back in the day?
About six of the nine years.
We, you know, we, this is really kind of the beginning of the process, and next Monday, we will meet as a committee, and I hope we will approve a letter and a questionnaire that will be sent out via TIM to all the departments, that will set up a schedule of meetings at late October. These kind of marathon meetings we've been holding in recent years disrupted somewhat, of course, by COVID-19, but getting back on the kind of schedule that we got used to, and we'd like the idea of having those sessions, everybody coming in one by one, going over their proposed budget. Those will be on the 25th of October and the 27th of October. When the letter goes out, you'll see the actual schedule for each of the departments. We would encourage any of you to attend, if you can, some or all, as you wish. There may be some juggling of the schedule as we get closer to the date, because people, some people may not be able to make it, but nevertheless, it usually has held up pretty well. In terms of the year, in some ways, you know, this is likely to be a more normal budget year, but a normal budget year for Carlisle is always a difficult budget, as I think David alluded to, and for reasons I think we're all pretty familiar with. What we know now, in terms of unusual things that might impact it, include, first, the teacher negotiations with the school, always important, negotiations with the police union, both happening at the same time, and there's the EDCO problem that kind of hovers out there. We don't know if that will end up being a fiscal '22 or fiscal '23 or nothing eventually, but it has some potential to be a real impact, and it's not a normal thing that we have to deal with. The other thing that's out there for this budgetary year are these various committees that I think you have set up or are in the process of setting up, that have the potential to be significant financially over a number of years. So those are going to emerge as the year rolls forward. To me, that means that proceeding with the operational budget, as we are, is all the more important, so that we kind of get that along the way, and then when there's discussions about at least the financial part of some of those things, we'll know what the context is and what the big impact might be. But now, we're going to just be gathering information. On the late October, we don't make any decisions. We just listen, ask questions, try to clarify what people think they need, and then after that, we would get together as a committee, eventually with you again, and then put out in December, the so-called guidance budget. Those would be kind of the real numbers we hope will hold up through the rest of the process. Every department will see it. They'll have a chance in January or February to come back to us and, you know, if they have new information. We don't want to just go over the same thing again, but if they have new information, then we'd be glad to meet with them and talk it over again. The ultimate goal would be to have a kind of final budget to bring to you, probably in, we hope, early March of next year. It's been kind of the process recently. It has worked, even worked in 2020, except we then had to blow it all up, you know? So who knows what may eventuate. There are three practical items. I know there's an issue, and I definitely in your goals, about long-term financial questions, but in terms of just this budget season, there are a few ways, practical ways, you could be helpful to our process. One is to decide, and I hope concur, with the idea of moving most of the maintenance line items into a central line item here under Town Hall. I don't know that anybody on the Select Board has disagreed with that over the last couple of years, but we just haven't done it. So we would like to do it this year. It would mean moving things in that are classic maintenance things, not the things that are specific or really unique to a particular department, but, you know, are generic, and that can at best be managed centrally, as I know we hope to evolve to true central facilities management. So I don't know what is required, other than just nodding your heads or, you know, but we would like to incorporate, yes, David?
Including the school maintenance budget?
Well, I think that's a separate discussion. I think the bigger discussion is about, you know, joining everything, but I think we're focused now on all the others.
Starting with just the town side.
Right. Second thing is personnel decisions. Our letter will say that we would like people to have gone through the process, if they want to add a new position or change hours, to have done all those steps by late October. And that's what we've asked in the past. You know, we need your cooperation, although they also need to, you know, move forward themselves. It's, you know, it's not a matter of you initiating it, it's just you're being ready to act if they go through TIM and the Personnel Board and then come to you. You know, there's a little wiggle room there, but the idea that, you know, in January, somebody comes back and says, oh, by the way, you know, we want to add eight hours here, I think is, it should be unacceptable. So we hope you will concur with at least that goal of everybody getting that through by the end of October. The last thing would be warrants, and just a timetable for when you want to close the door on new warrants. I think, I don't know if it was true, maybe Kate, you know, was it the last regular year we had, was it the end of January?
When we want to close? Yeah.
I think it's actually earlier.
That's very helpful.
Nathan, maybe?
Yeah. I think it may have been a little bit earlier than that, and certainly Personnel was earlier than that, and of course, there were things that popped up that messed with our goal there.
But I think if, I mean, whatever date you want to set is great, but if it could be no later than the end of January, again, is to try to put some discipline into the process, and that's totally under your control, but it'd be very helpful to us.
Now, are you thinking warrants that have financial implications or all warrants?
Well, we're narrowly somewhat focused on those, the ones that was financial, but I would, I would think that for your sake, to do it all in the same timeframe.
January for an April meeting is not that long a time to then be able to have the hearings that you need to have around them and all this other stuff.
Prepare materials, yeah.
Prepare materials, so.
And other towns do, I think, do something similar, so. And like so many things, it's one thing to have that goal and then actually to, you know, stick with it.
It's always the odd thing that inevitably crops up at the last minute, that you have to kind of be flexible, I think, enough to also accommodate if this.
Right, you can be. If you've done everything else, then you can be, but you don't want people to think, oh, well.
Want all of them to come in that way, yeah.
Right.
But anyway, that's kind of where we are, as we look to fiscal '23. Anything you want to add, James, or Melissa, or Lynn? You know, once we get, after October, we'll probably be meeting every week and reviewing what we heard, probably have individuals in for various reasons. You know, we really get kicked into high gear then.
Melissa, did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm good.
Yeah, I think we've got the covered. I think the key here, this is Lynn, is to make sure that the Personnel Board is available, to make sure that we can, it is a very tight timeline, and I'll make sure that I communicate that with, as the liaison, but TIM is always helpful supporting this as well, so just making sure they're actually planning to have some hearings, so that people have an opportunity to meet the FEMAC need base, to meet that timeline.
Yeah, I was going to mention, so I'm glad you said that, Lynn. I mean, the Personnel Board, it's been kind of always a long pole in the tent situation to get requests, and then the Personnel Board has to weigh in on the wage and class, and we have to weigh in on the merit of the position or the expansion or whatever, and FinCom gets involved, so. And we, didn't we have this dilemma last year where we were arguing, which it's a chicken and egg argument, right? You wait for Personnel Committee to tell you, this is the job description, this is the prevailing wage, and then we weigh in, or do we weigh in and not waste our time with something that we?
Actually, two years ago, we set up a new policy, and the thing was, came to Select Board first. Select Board decided whether they felt they had enough merit to even go to the Personnel Board.
So that's what we're doing now?
Which is what we did last week or two weeks ago with the.
Okay, right. So we did those.
Financial thing, right. Then, once the Personnel Board does their thing, comes back to us, and I think then, and back to us for sort of, again, our support or not.
I think, so then what I'm hearing you say, Jim, is maybe, let me say it and see if it's, that we have waited, the requests have already come to us for this coming. We've already made some analysis, pronouncements, whatever, and pushed it to Personnel Board, so the ball's in their court. So your statement, like you want decisions made by late October, everything that we need to decide on is already known, right? I mean, people can always come at the last minute.
Well, I'm not sure if that's the case.
For the two, or for the roles that, you know, we know about so far. So I completely agree. I think, you know, what was put in place a couple of years ago, comes to the Board of Selectmen, is it even worth looking at? Goes to Personnel Board, comes back to the Board of Selectmen with a cost, and then we decide, okay, yes, let's see, let's ask FinCom to figure out, does it fit in the budget?
Right.
And we just need a timeline for that, right?
I believe that's what we did last time, and yeah.
Okay, so I agree. I think that's.
And we, last year, Nathan, we were having so much trouble with the Personnel Board that we deputized Tim as Head of Personnel to make those decisions if the Personnel Board wasn't there to do it, and then bring it back to us, so that it wasn't hanging everybody up until.
Is the Personnel Board still just three people?
Yes.
Four, four people. It should be five, but four members.
Okay, so, I mean, our problem is volunteers. I think they're working very hard, but I think we just need more people on that.
Yeah, but.
What we have for years.
We needed a workaround, because we needed to get the work done, and it wasn't their fault, but we needed to get it done. We couldn't have Town Hall closed down because we couldn't get our committee going.
Well, we need to, we just need to pick what are those timeframes? You know, if somebody wants to have a position considered, what's the first round with the Select Board? When do they need to come back to the Select Board, so that Select Board can give FinCom enough time to look at it?
It seems like that was all laid out two years ago, and there was this, and we just have to republish that. When you were on, we made that, we made that schedule. We had it.
We just need to look at it in light of the FinCom's desire to have this by the end of October.
Right.
And see if we're on track. Yeah. But we can do that.
And at this point, I guess, you may know more, but we don't, nobody's come to us particularly so far saying they're raising their hand about that. They probably will, but we haven't seen it yet.
You know, the Finance Director is coming with the.
Well, that's, that's a current, current year issue, yeah.
And we said no to the Board of Health last year, and they're likely to come back again, I presume?
Yeah, but they got to go through the process. They have to come back with the entire process again.
Well, I mean, right.
And I think it's incumbent on us as the Select Board, you know, with Tim, to make sure that word has, goes out right away to the Department Heads.
Maybe I could suggest, not to, but I could, will suggest to Jim that maybe in your preliminary letter, you should indicate any, I hate to say, because maybe openly based, but any department's considering a change, add or change in personnel, needs to get at least that piece identified early.
That'll be in the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's not, it's not necessarily how many times a board comes to the Board of Selectmen for a position. It's always got to be on the merit of the position.
No, I know that. I'm just saying, I'm anticipating, you know, requests coming, worming their way in, and I think what you're saying is, like, it doesn't do any good to have that conversation. Well, if that conversation takes place in January, it's not that helpful.
Yeah, it's too late already, because October is, the October deadline has passed.
That's where we are then on fiscal '23, operational budgeting. We'll have a lot more to say next time we meet with you. On the bigger, long-term question, I know that it's an important one for the Board. You said it was a goal, it's something we've talked about as a committee. I know it's being talked about.
Jim, before we go to long-term, just again, on the short-term, do you have any guidance on new starts, like on the revenue side, what the picture looks like?
No, you know, the year we're in appears to be a relatively weak year for new housing. Melissa has said to us she thinks next year will be stronger, but it's really too early. Okay, thank you.
And maybe before we talk about the long-term, I just want to circle back to the last point that, Jim, you made, which is, we as a Select Board should figure out, you know, maybe at one of our future meetings, but one that's coming up soon, about when we want to close the door on new warrants, and make sure that that gets, date gets established and spread, circulated. Yeah.
You got a suggestion for us?
Number first.
Yeah, there you go.
Last year?
And last year, yeah.
Yeah, but what are your thoughts about getting to where we could have some kind of a long-term financial forecast for the town?
You know, it's a tough issue, because, you know, I mean, even if you look back at the last two years, if we'd had this conversation two years ago, nobody, of course, would have predicted what would have happened subsequently. But even if you put aside things like pandemics, and you look over the last 10 years in terms of the percent increase in expenditures, the change in tax rate, you know, it's a, it's a line like this. It's not a line like this. And so projecting into the future, it depends a lot on where you start, and where you, you know, you can do a straight-line projection, or you can try to dig deeper into what some of the drivers are, and try to identify places where you might be able to change things, you know? And I think that takes, you know, a lot of discussion and analysis. I'm not sure how much is about numbers. I think most of us have a pretty good sense of where the costs are and what some of the underlying drivers are, but how do we, how do we deal with them? Are we willing to make some big changes, like outsourcing, merging departments with other towns, or things like that?
I think the conversation has to begin, because we'll never get there, you know?
Well, I think these are, these are also conversations that the Master Steering Committee is having as well, so I think it's important to, you know, be checking in with them to see where they're at in terms of their findings as well, in terms of, you know, they're gathering a lot of information and data as well. So I think it's kind of a joint effort, not only just, not only just a financial effort.
Right, but I, you know, Jim and I were talking about this last night. I think what I applaud the Master Planning Committee for doing is benchmarking, in a fairly large sample size and a very thoughtful survey, benchmarking the priorities of the citizenry. What are their goals, right? That was in the paper and in the report. I'm not as hung up on that, on the absolute numbers, like 92% want more open space. I'm more interested in the relative ranking of, inside that survey, what was top and what was not top, right? So I'm happy that we have that. My criticism, and maybe it's not really criticism, because it's not really their mission, but the shortcoming of that is that there's not. but the shortcoming of that is that there's not been an overlay.
Ooh, he's here.
Take over the entire.
I didn't expect you to come marching in. Anyway, so I, I think that they didn't put numbers to it. It doesn't have context of finance, which is, makes it harder to really stress test, you know, those things. But nevertheless, it's there. So, so it gives us guideposts, you know, as to these priorities. And to Jim's point, I think we know, we, even good year, bad year for new starts, it's not such a wildly fluctuating number that one can't make a good assessment of what the revenue base is likely to look like. It makes certain assessments as to Chapter 70 and 90 and all that stuff that you can put in there. And similarly, our capital debt, you know, it's big chunks of things that we kind of know the baseload, and we can put all that in for several years. And I think then, I think comes really a good analysis point, in my opinion, to take this prioritization data from the Master Planning and other input. And I agree with Jim, it doesn't need quantitative, doesn't need quantitative. We know enough about those relative costs that we can start to figure out what fits in there and where, you know, where should choices be made, like you said, outsourcing or reimagining certain functions. And I think that's a very, you know, we've done it in the past over time, but we've never stuck to it. We've never really driven it to a decision-making point where we actually make certain trade-offs. And, and I think, I hope and maybe I feel that there's a more willingness now to kind of get into that.
Actually, David, the next iteration of the poll, from what I understand, and you know more about it, and I think Lynn knows about it, is, it's going to start asking, the next questions will be about trade-offs, you know.
This is in the Master Planning.
In the Master Planning process, because we are totally aware that it's great to have a priority of having open space, but if you're having to trade up that off for some, you know, what are you willing to trade off for it? Because you cannot have everything. So now, what is, now that you, you know, yes, we think it's important too, but.
And when, when is that exercise?
The plan is that it's going to go out early October. We have a community forum set up, just to give a little pitch here, the end of the month, September 29th, and it's both remote and it's a hybrid meeting, so you could join remotely or in person up at the cafeteria, and.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock, and the Master Plan Steering Committee and Barrett Consulting Group will present more specific recommendations. And so, and then following that evening, we will produce a survey that will go out online, similar to the one that you're referring to, David. But this time, as Kate said, it'll be more specific in terms of choices people are willing to make.
So I think it would behoove all of, many of us that are interested in doing this analysis down the line, attend as much of that as possible so that we are kind of like, we're not getting it second-hand, the third-hand, and kind of listen to what's going on.
Yeah.
We also want to be careful not to make decisions along the way this year that preempt that process. If you're just making one up, for example, let's say a piece of land comes up that looks really attractive, and you're not going to buy it, you know, this November for $10 million, and people want to do it. Well, if you do it, then you basically, you can put this process, you know, on the shelf because you preempted.
Yeah.
And it's not always easy because there are things that come up that are really worth considering, but it might be nice to kind of hang off until people feel that they have a better grasp of what really is, what are the priorities for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would add, I think we've, we've seen after many years that just maintaining our current service and the contract increases and just maintaining and even not maintaining facilities consumes what one would consider a sustainable increase. So as we're looking to add or change, you know, we have to, that's got to be part of the trade-off, is not just amongst the new ideas, but where does that come from, or what is the financial impact that the town needs to recognize?
And that's right. I agree completely, and that's why, to me, you, you should, and I think the Master Planning survey so far, and even more if you do what we're saying, should give us guidance, like what do people think makes Carlisle Carlisle, right? And so schools, you know, and open space and certain things have been top of list, and, and we got that. But people are not saying, I think, you know, and I'm going to say this unfairly, but like paying my tax bill at Town Hall is like not a core competency for us, you know, and, and so we, we, this is what Jim and I were discussing. I mean, that's where you start to decide, where are you going to start making your trades? Don't start at the things that people think are the most important things because they're important. I mean, you know, let's look at the things that people don't say are important, and we should be more self-critical about the way we do it. We're kind of insular. And, you know, I love small-town New England, and I love being part of town government, and I love the fact that there's 361 little entities that make their own decisions. But the fact is, it's not an efficient model by any stretch of imagination, and we should be smarter, you know? We can still have a great school, we can still have open space, and we can outsource a whole bunch of things. And, and, you know, those are the kind of things that I would be very interested in.
Well, any discussion that you can want to have in our committee would be to add either individuals or in whatever form, we'd like to be part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we talked a little, you know, the model that we've done a couple of times, I, I will say successfully, some may argue, is, is have a very small informal group that begins to frame it and gets expert opinions as needed, or other boards, certainly, you know, Planning Board, other boards involved. And then at a point in time where you're at a, you know, really delving into critical issues, you need to formalize a committee, give them a charge, and, you know, give them some structure. I mean, if you just launch a committee with an open agenda, it's not so good. It's better to give it a little bit of guidance. So that's what I recommend, is that we form a little informal group to start discussing these issues.
A couple, that's a couple, a couple of schools.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Luke, do you have anything you want to say on this?
I kind of walked in on this late, so now I'm.
Okay. Nathan, any comments you want to offer?
Uh, no, I mean, I think I agree with everything that's, you know, been said here. Did I unmute myself? Were you able to hear me?
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Where is this?
It's not acknowledging.
We're ignoring you. Okay.
I feel at home then.
Okay, well, shall we move on then to, or, or I guess let's ask the, you folks, what do you think of the idea of a small kind of informal group to kind of outline what we, how we should approach this? And then from there, go to something more formal?
I think that's a good way to start it.
Yeah.
It's an informal way to get it started, and then that has to evolve as the time goes on and become more formal.
Yeah.
And that's, that's for the longer-term view, right? Not an informal group, but then going to go to the bigger group for the shorter-term stuff, because we don't have enough time for that.
No, right.
And we have to stick, on the shorter term, we have to.
You have your process.
Yeah, yeah, right. You've got your calendar, yeah.
I think, I think our next meeting, we should talk about, you know, the four topics that Jim brought up, and get back to him on those timelines and everything.
Three, yeah. Right, maintenance, personnel decisions, and when the warrant, when we close the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we should all, I, I got, I got a short-term point and a long-term point. So on the short-term, as every year, the school is, education, not the school, is going to be close to 2/3 of the budget. And so obviously, a lot rides on how that's managed. And there's a young, there's a, there's a less tenured school committee presently than, than any time I've been involved. So my advice is that, and I'm not sure exactly how, but a three-way meeting perhaps, to talk through those issues for this year, because as you say, I mean, there's a whole budget negotia, or a contract negotiation that's got variables, but even setting that aside, you know, they got a lot of stuff going on. They've had COVID, they've had, you know, all the things they have to deal with. And it would be good, I think, for my side, and I'm sure for you, to understand what's driving and what we can expect. They, they got a generous, let's say, increase last year, partly because there was no increase the prior year, and they, you know, stretched and stuff, and that's great. But I'm not sure, you know, that, that the budget can sustain that kind of an increase this year, and they need to understand the parameters. So, so that's my short-term comment.
And we just, related to the high school, we have Melissa here.
Yeah.
Let's remind ourselves that the past two budget years, we benefited.
Right.
Potentially, and with the smaller share at the high school. You know, and I'm not sure that's a great thing in the long run, but in the short run, it has helped us. We don't know yet. Enrollment date is October 1st, and after that, I think, you know, there'll be more clarity about what'll happen with fiscal '23.
We have the predictive model, though, right?
It, we do, but you just have to see how, and how, and this past year was really driven more by Concord's increase than by our decrease. So, you know, we'll see how the numbers play out, but i- if it were to swing the other way, we would have a real challenge.
Yeah, I agree. Jim, Dave, are you thinking of wanting the region there, or are you talking with CPS?
I guess up to you. I hadn't, I hadn't thought that far ahead, Melissa. I think we have enough CPS issues. But I don't want to exclude the region. I mean, I think.
Well, Sarah, Sarah's the chair, so I think it's just a question of Lori and Jared.
You know, I think that's fine. I, I personally think it's fine. I don't, I think we should, I see it more in a way as a FinCom meeting, so I want FinCom to also decide how it wants to proceed. But yeah, the issues are quite similar. Issues are similar. I think we have a little more leverage in guiding behavior and thought process at the CPS. You know, the region is like, got its own process, and then, you know, we have a math exercise at the end of that, right? I mean, that's kind of the way that goes. But yeah, I would be interested in what they see, I certainly would be.
So David, do you think maybe when you guys are meeting on, October 27th or 28th, or whichever date you're meeting with them, do you think we should post a meeting so that we?
Is that the date? It's your first?
Well, they're currently in the schedule for the 27th, the high school, and each year, they're not ready to, to show us a budget on that date, but we meet anyway and kind of go over some of the more broader issues in a sense of where they are. So, you know.
It's the high school or the?
That would be, yeah. And we could do the same with the CPS on the same.
And they, they usually come with, with the draft budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Were you suggesting the Select Board have a, participate in that FinCom meeting?
Yeah, I figure instead of having another meeting, this one, they're already meeting those two groups, just we just, you know, barge in on the party.
I think we're shots making a point here.
Yeah, what's that?
Well, okay, a couple of things. One, so I did, I've been in contact with Jim, and he sent me their draft budget timeline. So they're going to be presenting, current draft is that go present the school committee with the first draft of the budget in the mid-October timeframe. So a couple of weeks later, you meet with us. I don't think our meeting format is conducive to a three-year committee. I think the school committee's not there. We have pretty much.
We have everything back-to-back, so it's. Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I was just trying to avoid everybody having to have a next meeting.
We have a downtime after that week. The November is classically a time where we have the information. It's a good time to set up that kind of meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
It still gives us enough time before the budget guideline, so maybe the first week in November.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so let me go to my second point, which will relate to this. So my second point, I mentioned to Jim yesterday, is we made a goal of ourselves that we would reach out to all the major committees twice a year. And it's natural to do the first one right around the budget time, right? Because a lot of it has to do with money. So, so we would anyway need to reach out. We figured that we're meeting with school, I think we're going to meet at the end of September, right? End of September, right? And so maybe it doesn't need a three-way. But I would like to get in their heads a little before they start gelling, right? Because once they have that thing, and then, you know, now they're like amending a document they made, so.
I think September would be the time.
Right, so yeah, I think we have, I think Jack said we would. So I, I think we will do that. Maybe we don't need a three-way.
So you don't think it needs to be a three-way at that point with the FinCom there to support, you know?
Yeah, people should.
Maybe, maybe Scott and I could attend.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, at the very least.
I think we picked a date with Jack, right?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if.
We're making room on the 28th, I think.
Yeah, I'm looking at, page 186 is our draft agenda. Do you remember, Tim, if it's on there?
I'll find it for you. It's on the, here. I got it.
Yeah, I hear it, I got it.
We were trying to fit it in.
Talked about, we tried to fit it in.
Tuesday, October 12th, joint meeting with school committee.
Is that right?
Oh, that's October 12th, okay.
Oh, okay. So maybe that's okay too.
Yeah, that's right.
Before, I don't think he would have, the administration would have presented a budget to the school committee prior to that, so.
Have we checked out with school committee?
No.
He and I were talking about the 28th.
Of September.
Yeah.
I'll check, I'll check that with Jim.
I'll circle back. But one of those days then.
You just have to figure out.
Yes, you guys should attend. I think, again, it's, and this, this relates to what I do want to ask you guys. Part of the reach-out is just, you know, what else is on your mind? How can the Select Board help? Right? So that's, you know, part of, anyway, those reach-outs. So let me pose that question to you guys. Besides the things you've mentioned, what else is on your mind and how, and how can we help you?
Well, I asked other members of the committee, I sort of offered a couple of things already, but, you know, I guess the only thing that comes to my mind in the context of what you just said, David, is you're going to meet with committees, and when we get into the budget process, and you meet with them, they're going to be tempted to basically make their budget pitch to you. And, which is fine, as long as, you know, they don't get, they don't get a response, you know? And you don't say, yes, that's a great idea, you know? And you know how it is, even nodding your heads at them will kind of get them to say, well, the Select Board approved it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Tim Goddard's saying, don't, don't speak if you can nod, don't nod if you can wink, don't wink, smile.
But it's tricky when you're the way, season, I just would raise that cautionary.
I think that's a good, yeah, it's a very good.
What else? In some members?
I think the thing I observe, this is my, like, eight budget cycle, is, you know, a lot of the issues we deal with every year. And I, I think we're, we're going to, you know, with the master planning and all the different initiatives coming to the fore, you know, I think we're somewhat beholden to the structure we have in terms of power structure to the town. So I know there's this initiative to look at the org structure, and I, I do think that we really need to take a look at how we're set up, how we're, how our responsibilities divided among committees, how, how the different committees roll up. Because I, I do feel like, at the end of the day, there's only so much we can do under our current format. And we need to look at really how the town is governed. And I don't know what the answer is to that question, but I do think that our current structure kind of brings some, some pros and cons. And I can see a lot of these topics we're talking about, and a lot of these initiatives we want to do, might just get caught up in our existing structure and just die on the vine, so to speak. So aside from all the other things, I think the, I don't know where it stands, the, the committee to look at the organizational structure, I think that's very important. And I think figuring out what the right changes, if any, are to impact, be able to make some of these decisions on the prioritizations of the town is important. Does that committee have a, I know, Barney, you had said that some of these committees have an end of December goal to get back to the Select Board. Does the Governance Committee have that?
No, no. They, their, their goal is to bring warrant articles to next, to the spring. So January, well, in fact, we might have to give them a little leeway for those warrant articles. We'll have to talk to them because that gives them the freshest little time.
But you know, it might make sense to have Wayne had offered before to, to, yeah, come report into the Select Board, so maybe we should do that.
And they're just getting up and running. They just got their.
Maybe they don't, yeah, I mean, I realize the normity of their task. So it's two things on, on that. One is that that committee is a product of a process that I outlined, I articulated earlier, which involved, tell me from like Planning Board, ConsCom.
The Governance Committee, yeah.
It was a by-product of that process.
Of the small groups.
Oh, right.
Of the land use organization.
So we had pretty cross, Board of Health, I mean, so we even, I agree with you, the structure excludes you, but within that structure, we figured out a way to identify creating, come on. The thing that you bring up, though, and I don't know the answer to this, is anybody on that committee familiar with town government process, you know, the decision-making process?
Vanessa Maroney, I would say, is. Ryan Cruz is a municipal lawyer.
I mean, the ones who've experienced the Carlisle way, right?
Yeah, well, in fact, I think. Uh, yeah, well, in fact, I think, um, Warren, like deliberately chose people who weren't that terribly experienced in the Carlisle way so that they would remain open to.
No, but they also may be unaware of some of the difficulties of the way.
Yeah, well, no, they're going to, they're supposed to be setting up interviews with the various.
Okay, great, then that's good.
Yeah.
So, these guys will have a chance.
So, you will have a chance, I think, to put some input.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to thank you for, uh, tonight's discussion. And I think we, as a committee, need to adjourn formally, since we did, uh, is it going to get a motion to adjourn?
Are they not part of this, waiting on the adjourns? Before you vote?
Oh, do you want to have a comment on that about the finance?
Yeah, if you wanted, before you adjourned to, um, the finance director's request, I don't know if Kim is on the.
She is on the.
Room call?
She is.
Yeah.
Let me just say that we haven't taken a position on that as a committee per se. However, we did in the spring agree with Kim that she needed more help and that we did, and we put that $11,000 into the budget thinking of something different. But if this accomplishes the same goal, you know, and, and, and you're agreeable with that, I think this committee is probably just fine. Doesn't cost anymore.
Okay. Um, I also, before you adjourn, uh, just, I'll quickly do this, Kim, and then we can come back to you, but John Kaufman is behind you. Hi, John. Thank you for coming. And he is the, um, candidate that we've put forward to be the citizen representative on the ARPA committee. So, Scott, he, here, for, representing the FinCom and Kate Reed, here, representing the select board, would be the members of the ARPA committee, so. Maybe we should do that quickly while John is here. And then, Kim, if you don't mind, we'll.
It's fine.
Presentation, is that all right?
It's fine.
Okay. John, do you want to come up to the mic, if you don't mind, and just, um, say a few words about yourself and your interest in being on the committee?
Sure. Well, thank you very much. Uh, when I read in the mosquito this opportunity, it sounded very interesting to me. Uh, my background in finance, I've been in corporate finance for many years. Uh, and the fact that it's also part of, uh, something what I think is really positive and good and something needed by the community is something I can contribute to. And it just sounded like a nice fit.
And we have in our packets his letter of interest, which details lots more about your background and skills.
I can give you more background if you want, I don't want to bore you.
Very impressive.
You know, I, I think we're all, well, I'll speak for myself, I was very pleased to, you know, have you come forward and I think you'd be a great addition to the committee. But I wonder if anyone else, um, on the select board or FinCom would like to make a comment or ask John a question? Anyone?
I'm good, no, I'm good.
All right, well, then, let's go ahead. I will take a motion then to, um, appoint John Kaufman, uh, to the American Rescue Plan Act Committee.
I move.
Second. So, we'll have to do a roll call vote here, so, um, Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Brown, I. Odell, I.
Reed, I.
Great, and so the motion carries unanimously, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, really appreciate you coming forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Government's money.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I love spending other people's money.
Yeah, so Scott or Kate or maybe Tim will reach out to the three of you to.
Lots of background information for the three of you on that.
Yeah.
I already read a whole big packet of them.
Basically, it's blank check, right? We can use it for whatever.
No, not exactly.
As long as it's one of the, on those 18 pages of guideline.
Yeah, right, right. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it, okay, bye-bye. All right, Kim, back to you. Now, if you all want a, a, um, during your meeting officially, that's fine and you.
Why do we do that?
Welcome to stay, yeah.
We have a motion already.
Second?
Second. Okay, let's have a roll call.
I.
Dar, I.
Lipinski, I.
McNamara, I.
You all, I. And that's it. So, our meeting is adjourned formally. Again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all, we really appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, let's see, in our packet, page 24 is where I believe Kim, or is that where John's, uh?
How did I mark? It's under the joint committee meeting.
Yeah.
Or are they, I don't know, yeah.
Yes, so, um, we start with, uh, so you've provided the job description, Kim, and then, uh, just beyond the job description is your memo about, um, the reasons for your request. So, maybe, do you want to start with that? Just run through that briefly, Kim?
Sure, um, I'm looking to hire a new assistant and in order to get somebody, um, that I feel will be qualified with the right skill sets. The way it stands now, you can call 30 hours, um, full-time as far as benefits, but it's really part-time when you're in a competing field with other towns. Um, in order to get somebody that wants to make this their career, I want somebody I can mentor so that we can have a succession plan. I need somebody that can be a full-time, um, collector, treasurer, that can take over in my absence, that wants to go to school, and again, has the right skill set, um, for this position, not just being a clerk, so to speak. I do have the additional, um, money, um, from the prior year, the 11,000, which will more than cover it. So, I'm just requesting that, um, I can increase the hours to 35. I have a very strong candidate, but I cannot make an offer with the way it currently stands as is. I have three other inquiries, which would not fit the skill set that I need for a succession plan or to, um, they have, they have no treasury or collector experience within, uh, any other municipality. They'd be great as a financial clerk, which, love to have one of those too, but not for this position. So, I'm requesting that the five hours or the 11,000 that was given last year be used to be added to make this position 35 hours so that I can hire a assistant treasurer collector to fill that job description, which, Barney, just so you know, there are laws that, under Mass General laws, there's the appointment of the assistant treasurer collector. So, they kind of fall under that. So, it's a, it's a very broad job description. It basically is, in my absence, they should be able to do anything and everything that I do. And actually, anything and everything in the office, from clerical to tax takings, to billing, to anything I request that they do. Um, so, I would like at this point to hire somebody that, again, would be with the right skill set and, um, would like to be mentored and go to the school, get certified, and hopefully want to be a, um, treasurer collector at some point. Questions?
Uh, I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, I, I just want to, I'm just looking at your memo. Um, and it says that the cost of these additional hours is already in the budget and, and how, how is that?
Um, as Jim spoke, um, last year I was going for more hours in my office. I was actually going to give the hours to, um, the, not the assistant treasurer collector, but the assistant to the treasurer collector, which primarily all she really does, and because she only has the time to that, she does all payroll, benefits, HR, uh, bringing people on and off. She had a better skill set to, um, help me mainly with working with, um, special projects like tax taking, tax takings and cashbook. Um, the, the, um, in the end, the select board did not approve those hours and wanted me to use consultants. And I would have used consultants for a special project, like, you know, to, um, maybe come in and balance, you know, cash with the accountant or to print the tax bills with the assistant if I didn't have a chance to do it because I was working on finance director things. But you can't have a consultant come in and do day-to-day work. It's just not feasible. We can't have our consultants do that because that would be, uh, they can't do work at, of that level and audit it. Um, so, there's really not, I've searched, there's not a lot of, uh, there's not a lot of consultants out there that really are available. And at 150 an hour, it's not going to get the job done. At the same time, we have a new town accountant, so, working with her, she's newer, um, into the field, she's been done auditing. But our cash turnover sheets, even if I hire somebody now, they don't have the account numbers or all the detail for charge codes to put into the system. So, I'm working on revamping, um, that. So, um, I can't really even have a consultant that wants to work off-site when I can't hand them receipts because they don't have the right charge codes and numbers and they'd have to hunt and peck for them. So, trying to organize everything so when I get a person in, it will help both the town accountant and this new person to understand the account numbers and have everything in front of them, so it's just a seamless, you know, process. But, um.
Okay, I have one other question, if I may.
George.
You, you mentioned, um, you know, you're looking for somebody who would go to school and become certified. Is that something that we're offering somebody who would be starting? And if so, what is the cost of that? And would it be on, you know, work hours and, and how would that work?
So, um, it's always good, you get networking, it, it's, it's a disadvantage if you don't want to, um, send your people to be, um, certified. Uh, there's ever-changing laws and everything going on, networking. Um, you go to UMass Amherst and you're part of an association, Mass Collector and Treasurers Association. And, um, the certification, just, it's like being a CPA or, which I'm a CGA, Certified Governmental Accountant. It just, it hones your skills, it teaches you, it's not real expensive. Um, it's a three-year, um, schedule and then you have to take a test and pass it. Um, I have some training in there. I would build the training in order to do that. UMass, uh, I'm trying to think of what it is, probably under $500. They could go for the four days, once a year, to do it. This, uh, candidate that I have has already been one year to the Mass Collector and Treasurers Association, so they have one year under their belt. So, they'd have two more, um, in order.
You're saying it's, it would be $500 a year and would it be, would it be four days of work time or would it be, it's just four days?
It would, it would cover the work time. You go, um, like a Monday to Thursday out to UMass and it's like eight to four every day and you go to the classes.
Okay, and it's $500 for that.
Yeah, and then you have to do, yeah, if they do day or, uh, it, it depends on, you have to hotel and stuff like that. But usually the classes are really reasonable associations, so it's usually the bigger expenses, just, um, where they stay overnight.
Oh, so it's not local?
No, it's at UMass Amherst.
Okay.
The association takes over because you're figuring it's, you know, every 351 treasure, assistant treasurers or treasurer collectors from each town, double that. It's quite, it's way a large association.
So, would you be looking to add a couple thousand dollars to the budget or is that already in your training?
I have some training in there. I probably would maybe add a little bit more when I, when I, um, look through it. I've also done some savings with some outsourcing, so if I can flip things back and forth and not go up in my budget much, I will. But there would be some type of investment. But it's a long-term investment because then you have a skilled, um, you know, a skilled, um, person working in that department. You wouldn't want me to leave and not hire somebody that wasn't certified.
All right, I completely agree with that, I'm just trying to.
Well, I'm looking at it.
Not a vague, it could be this much money, but when you come back, about how much money would you be asking us? You know, how much?
I'd have to look at my budget because I do believe there is, and I put some in there for training from last year when I, when I shifted my budget around. And I saved some from doing the bill printing, so there was a shift around, I'd have to look back at my budget. But I don't believe there would be, um, a large increase in my budget for that.
Okay, so, but that would just be for like the next year, right? So, I, I think we should probably plan that this would probably cost a couple thousand dollars a year additionally in the budget for training then, is what I'm hearing.
Possibly, I wouldn't say, I would say under 1,500.
And then the other thing, while we're on that topic, um, Kim, is, so, um, the, the, the change then in the hours for this position would then become a permanent change so that in fiscal year 20, so the, the funds for it are already, um, have been, were approved in the spring town meeting. For fiscal year 22, you're saying? And then for fiscal year 23, there'd be an increase in your budget of how, of, of the 10, whatever you estimated the cost is here.
My budget would go lateral unless you have, it was put in for this year. And with FinCom, as Jim said, it, they thought it was hours, which, in that sense, that's what I was going for last year. It would have been a permanent increase in it. So, I'm not going to drop it down, it would be the same as next year. And to Nathan's point, I, I got 11,450 and it was based on a different position for seven hours. This is five hours, so it's around $10,000. So, that other 1,450 would be the education, so.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify then that so.
It would be continued.
Add to the budget.
Right, it's a structural addition to the budget. For FY '23, your department would then be up 10 to 11,000 dollars for this increase in hours.
Not really, because.
No.
Put that structural increase already last year.
I thought it was a one, no, it was a consulting fees. It was not in salary, it was in consulting fees.
But is it recurring? It was designed to be recurring?
Yeah. That's what I thought, you, some of you wanted to go consulting, they went with hours, so, um, it was recurring. And then you wanted to re-discuss, which I would have this year, if we had done the consulting, would have probably, you know, revamped, um, the hours of the positions. It went, I was going for hours and it was at the end, Kate can speak to it, that it changed and by the select board and you didn't want to support the hours, you wanted to support consulting.
Right, I mean specifically.
And I would have asked for that again too, if I had the same structure and this position was not exempt. I would either be asking for something other, because the, the department is severely understaffed. It, it's not even three FTEs if you work it.
No, yeah, I, I understand that. You've made, you, you, you know, you did a very clear description here at the beginning. I was just trying to clarify that, um.
So, what's in my budget now would cover the 10,000 dollars and training.
It'd be an increase in the salary cost for the finance department.
But a decrease in another line item is what I'm hearing.
But there's a cost of healthcare, but I mean.
Okay.
The person already has healthcare now, so there's not an increase to healthcare. It's not a new position, they have full benefits. They would.
I would like to clarify that it wasn't that, we didn't support the IORs but supported the, um, um, consultant. We, we really wanted you to think about the department and how you wanted it structured and we didn't want to throw hours at, uh, something that wasn't going to solve your problem and that we, that this is what we were looking for. And I, I'm in full support of this new restructure of your department.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else, uh, have questions or comments? May I have a motion, please?
This is done due personnel board and everything?
Kim?
Technically, the personnel board approves increases in hours. I could have them take a perfunctory vote and selectmen clearly want to, to make this happen and the funding is there, so there'd be no reason for them to oppose it, so.
It's a wage class, you're offering it inside the proper wage class.
Yeah, there's.
Extend an offer to this person.
There's no change to the grade or to the position. Yeah, they're, they're meeting next Monday, I could have them vote to approve what the, the board, I think is what approves, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think getting a general sense of the board, you know, tonight would be good, but just in the last discussion, we sat and kind of talked about what the process was going to be.
Well, I don't want to hold up the, the hiring.
Right.
If that became a problem, so, um, and we think a way, a way to make the motion so that.
Yeah.
She can.
Kim, could you, um, would it be a, a problem if we had to wait till after Mondays? You said they're, they're meeting on Monday?
Yeah, but then we have to wait a whole cycle, why don't we vote?
I've been, I interviewed this person over a week ago, so they've been pulled off.
Vote tonight contingent upon the personnel board approval. We could go ahead and vote tonight if people are comfortable with that.
Okay, I, I move we, um, approve the appointment of, um, an additional hours for an assistant tax collector. Uh, contingent on approval by, by the personnel board. Well, and that, and that, rather, my, I don't think our approval is contingent. Um, because our approval is our approval, so, and then I would just say, uh, okay, so let me back up, set this over, I'm sorry. Um, that we, um, approve the additional, request for additional hours for assistant tax collector and that the, um, tax, uh, the finance director may, um, go forward with her hiring process. go forward with her hiring process contingent on approval by the personnel board. That work?
True.
So I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
So just clarify, we lost a person, right?
Yes, well, yes.
We're hiring so that we're anyway searching for that person, but now we're able to make it a full time off.
Yes, correct.
So I just have a quick question. So I just just want to understand, you know, I mean, I'm in support of this. I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to understand the process. You you said you hired the person a week ago. I mean, you you interviewed the person a week ago. Was that for the part time role?
Yeah.
Because you don't this 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 position didn't exist yet. I'm just wondering how we got.
It was the position, but it was on, it's an assistant treasure collector's position. But the request of what she had for her minimum salary was lower than what was on here. Do you know what I'm saying?
I I. You were you were interviewing her under a different rec that's out there and we're adjusting it.
The the same job description, everything is there. It's just the rate of pay was there and it was multiplied by 30 hours a week. And now it's a rate of pay by 35. So I can make her an offer within her range when she was going for an assistant treasure collector position. So I'm not changing the position.
Okay.
Is that does that is that clear to you?
Yeah, it's clear to me. I I.
She saw the advertisement, saw the rate of pay, contacted me, filled out an application. In her application, she said, this is my minimum that I'm looking for and I can't hit that. But I can hit it with a 35. And if she denies it, I'm going out for rebid because there's no one else in the queue to fulfill the position of the person that I want, what I what I got. I did not get anybody that was with the right skill set.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Alrighty, then let's take a vote. Roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Brown.
What do I?
You know. Excellent. All right, it carries unanimously, Kim.
If Nathan or any of you have any other questions, please feel free to, you know, I'm happy to follow up with anything. Do I have an idea? Is it Monday you said with the personnel like?
Next Monday.
Yep. And then they'll know to put this on.
The 20th, the 20th, Kim. Yeah.
I do the agenda for them.
Okay. Just one note separate now because prior to, I want to answer one of David Medel's questions about the revenue. I actually just was on with Moody's last week because we had, we're doing, I'm doing a bond refunding. And one of the questions that I talked with John Mativia was the growth in our tax base. So this year, there is, there's a development of 16 units. And John predicted there's one that already has their, I think occupancy or they're in the process with their building permit to finish up. But he predicted that there would be probably four units coming on in FY 21 and the other 12 would come on in FY 22. So as Jim said, it's lower increase with our, you know, tax base as much this year. But then those other 12 units should be on for FY in FY 22. But another note, which pays for my 10,000 I'm asking for is in the bond refunding. I also took some premiums that were on the books that we were slowly chipping away at because they weren't voted the way we vote now where you offset them with costs. So there's about a quarter of a million of that. And I took the 2012 bonds that were predominantly the school. And I'm doing a bond refunding, paying down the 250,000 and we're going back out for 7.2 million. And overall cost to the town for the life of the remaining loan should be 1.3 million dollars. It's an estimate because we're still in the process as long as nothing changes with the market. But you're looking at that loan savings with the bond refund I'm doing for 1.3 million savings to the town. So.
Excellent.
So hopefully next, when I saw and I put in my budget for debt, it should be going down.
Great. Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, so let's open up the hearing for the Community Cable Needs Assessment Study. Do I need to do something formal in terms of opening a hearing?
It is an advertised public hearing, but I Scott, we're joined tonight by town council Jenny Merrill and our consultant Sue Buskey, who has completed the community needs assessment. And I think maybe we'll ask Sue to explain where we are in the legal process and why are we having a public hearing? And a little bit about the negotiations with Comcast, which are beginning next week that Nathan agreed to be part of. So Sue, can you just kind of give us the lay of the land here?
Yes, can you see the PowerPoint screen I have up?
Nope. No.
Okay, let me get back here. All right, have you permitted screen sharing on your end?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Let me, let me know if it comes up again. I'll get out. Go to screen share here. Second. Now can you see it?
Nope.
Ta-da. Okay, great. I just have a few slides here. When we were Jenny and I and Tim were talking about this, I thought we thought it would be good to kind of refresh your memory a little bit. The the license renewal process or what we call the franchise renewal process, get here, is a process that's dictated by federal law. Okay. And it and it is in place simply because in order for cable company to use the public streets in order to put their wires, whether it's under conduit or on the on the poles, they have to get permission to use public property. Essentially, that's what a franchise agreement or a license agreement is. It is a land use agreement. The cable operator is part of that land use agreement, has to pay rent for the commercial use of public property. And under law, that rent comes in several forms. So part of what you end up being negotiating every 10 years, because these license agreements are 10 years long, is what the rent is for the use of the public property. Now, there are caps on certain aspects of the rent under federal law. For instance, there's something called a franchise fee. That's capped at 5% of the cable revenue. So you can't go above that. And you haven't been able to go above that since 1984, believe it or not. It's been capped that long. Okay. But other things that are part of what you could negotiate as rent for the user right away is channels for community use, support for those channels and certain other things. The license agreement also defines a type, level and quality of service that's going to be provided by cable operators. Now, remember, the cable operator delivers three different services on their wire. But the franchise or the license agreement is about the cable service. It doesn't address the internet service. It doesn't address the telephone service. Those are separate bodies of law. So unfortunately, we're dealing with a legal structure that's been in place for many years. That's essentially silos each of those different ways that a cable operator uses that wire. Now, back in 84, okay, when this law was passed, and it has been amended several times. But they didn't do phone. They didn't do broadband. They didn't do internet. There was only cable. Okay. So bottom line is the license agreement process is a land use agreement. The cable operator has to pay rent for the use of the right away. Part of what you're doing when you're negotiating or renegotiating a license agreement is determining what the rent is. You determine determine customer service standards. Under federal law, the city can and town can establish customer service standards that are different than or in addition to the state and federal customer service standards. The license agreements are typically 10 years in length. Okay. And public input is an absolutely critical part of that the license renewal process. In fact, it's probably, that is where one develops the justification for what you're going to ask for and negotiate to in the new license agreement. The opportunities that are available to you as part of the process is to make sure that the cable plant that is being used by the cable operator stays at state of the art. In other words, it's state of the art in 2021 and it will be updated and be state of the art in 2031 at the end of the 10 year agreement. Okay, to assure customer quality service, support for your community uses. And and also kind of looking at this as part of a long term communications planning process. One of the things that I've learned as part of this, my work with the town is that you've actually, you are now installing fiber different places to different municipal buildings around town. That actually becomes, that's that's your part of your communications infrastructure that the city is putting in. But there's an interface between that and what the cable operator may do. And that's something that I don't think people have thought a lot about on 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 the Carlisle. And maybe they have, but certainly nobody's talked to me about it if they have. Okay. And that's some of the things that I'm trying to do when I sit down and work with and do the needs assessment and also work with the to assist in the negotiation process. So here's the process under federal law for license renewal. And then I'm going to tell you where we're at in the process and what the next steps are. It's a 30 to 36 month process. Your current license agreement actually expires October 21st. And we've already had a conversation with Comcast about going to the state and getting it extended for at least another six months. And if possible, and if needed, another two six months extensions. Because you don't want to have your nose up against the wall on these deadlines because that doesn't work to your advantage at all at the negotiating table. The license renewal process requires you to look at has the company complied with this current contract? It's current license agreement to do a community needs assessment. And then take the information from that community needs assessment and sit down and go through an informal negotiation process. If the parties can't reach agreement as part of the informal negotiation process, which frankly, in a lot of cases will take a year or more because everybody's doing 50 million things at the same time. So it's not like you can sit down and do all the renewal negotiations in two days. It's a very complicated document. All right. So if you can't reach agreement, then there's a much more extended and complicated, what we call formal process. I'm not even going to get into that tonight because I don't anticipate that that's going to be anything that happens here. Now let me explain to you where we're at in the needs assessment process. We've examined the franchise agreements. A franchise, the license agreement, I I'm using franchise and license because in most other states, the license is called a franchise. And so we sort of use the terms interchangeably. They're the same thing. Okay. We have, we have had collected public input. We had a series of community focus groups. We had an online survey. I've done a series of meetings, both Zoom meetings. And also I was in Carlisle on August 2nd. Finally, I was able to come in and actually meet with the folks over at Minuteman Media, which is your current provider of community media services to get a better understanding of what they're doing. We've also done an examination of Minuteman Media Services and the services that they're providing and the nature of their equipment that they have in place now. All of that information now has been put together into all of the public input, all of the meetings, et cetera, into a draft needs assessment document. The notes and minutes from tonight's public hearing will add another section to that document. On September 28th, I'll be coming back to you guys and I will do a a presentation that's going to cover all of the stuff in the needs assessment. We keep the needs assessment marked draft because the moment you finalize the needs assessment, you close the record. You don't want to close the record until you're done negotiating the agreement because something may come up. New information may come and come to light that will impact where you're going in your negotiations. So we keep the needs assessments marked draft specifically so that we can keep the record open as well. So on September 28th, in two weeks, I'll be back and I'll give you a presentation on all of the things we've learned from the focus groups, from the online survey, and also obviously the input that comes in from the public input tonight. So tonight's meeting is specifically to meet one obligation under state and federal law, which is to have at least one public, a formal public hearing. Even though we've gone through a lot of other activities to collect public input, we need to have a public hearing. And that will then be recorded in the document. So that's where we're at in the process now. We anticipate a starting, I think, and Tim and Jenny can elaborate on this more. We have a inform, a meeting set next week, just to kind of get to know you, meeting to commence the negotiation without making any commitments to anything. Just sort of like, okay, here's what we're going to do. Here are dates, et cetera. And then after we you have the selectman meeting on the 28th. And we I have, I think likely an executive session. Then we'll we'll proceed with the formal negotia, the informal negotiation process. So with that, that's sort of an overview of the legal process and where you're at in the process right now. And we can take public input.
So shall we do that?
This is Nathan. It is, it is, is one of the things that we're allowed to negotiate. Getting the the cable company to service houses that are further away from the road.
Yes, that's what's called a line extension policy. And yes, that is absolutely one of the things that can be negotiated.
Yeah, that's that's one of the things that I hear the most in this town.
Okay, great.
And I'm looking forward to talking, you know, working with you on this, starting, I think it's very soon, next week.
Great.
As a public, what I just came in, is it okay if I say something?
Yeah, is this the time for public input now?
Yes.
That's great. Yeah, come on up to the podium here and introduce yourself and name your, say what, where you're from.
So my name is Angel Volchinov. I'm originally from Bulgaria, but I'm a new Carlisle resident. And I come here on behalf of all the residents of 50 acreway.
I'm here too.
Oh, good. Yeah. So and we have your letter here as well.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, sir and madam. If I may just, it's better if I read it rather than try to. So I'm writing to all of you to implore you to please stand up for us and connect us with broadband internet. We we haven't had, I'm a new resident, but none of the houses have had broadband internet ever. And in this day and age, it is incredibly difficult. We have always been left behind relying on crawling satellite internet, having incredible difficulty running a business or communicating with the world. In this COVID age, this need is even more evident. And it really is a matter of work or no work. As you know, that some people work remotely. Internet is now is now equal, is not sometimes more important than electricity, in my opinion, because it connects us with so many things. Everything is on the internet. If you're a person without broadband, which you mostly, most likely are not, you would truly understand. For example, our children's schoolwork is online. We've got about seven things from the school that we have to access online. Our work is online. Important events happen online. And basically, the whole world is online. We, not to say that we are always going to be focused on our screens because we adore our community and always love to connect with everyone in person. In fact, I'm a musician myself and we just played at the library fundraiser. We're going to help at the at the softball game. We love getting out. At the same time, you know how important it is to be connected online. But the lack of internet keeps us noticeably and somewhat purposefully, it seems, disconnected from everyone else. So I'm asking you, please, as a small business owner myself, based in Carlisle, I I I work here in other places, but I this is the place that I love to be at and to live with my family. I'm a head of a young family, a loving neighbor. I wholeheartedly ask you to run broadband internet to all of the houses on 50 acreway. We believe the town can invest in us and pay for the project. Again, I do believe the town should be willing to invest in us and pay for the project. Our tax dollars have been hard at work in our community. And now we ask that the community works hard for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, unfortunately, you were not here at the beginning of this presentation. And had you been, you would have learned that we are discussing the cable part, the cable service part of this, not the internet part, not the telephone part.
But don't they all come?
It's all from the same provider.
Once they run the cable.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure he understands and he has the correct expectations.
It's the same thing.
I agree with you.
So let's see what, Sue, what's your response to the, what you've heard?
Basically, the key, from what I'm hearing, the cable service, the the wire, the fiber does not go to that subdivision and to those homes at all. Okay, that's the key. If that wire can get to those homes, then those folks have the option of subscribing to broadband, cable or telephone. So as Nathan mentioned, this issue of line extension falls right into what this gentleman is is asking for is to see if we can get the line extension policy of the cable operator to deliver their wire to that subdivision. Once it's there, then internet can be delivered.
Yeah, I agree. I think this has to be a huge priority of ours, not just for 50 acreway, but you know, we need a list of everybody who is not served by it. you know, we, we need a list of everybody who is not served by it and go through that.
Right, exactly.
Yes, it's no longer a matter of watching movies, et cetera.
Yeah.
It's a matter of uh the connection with the world and, and work. Thank you.
And I agree with you. I just.
Yeah, no, and it's good, it's good to be very clear about that, but i- in, in the irony of all of this is it all, it all comes on the same wire. If we can get the wire there, okay, then the service, even though it's not cable, would be available.
Right. Um, I have any other, hold on, let me just see. Is there any other um, community input?
Yes.
Yeah, please, come on up.
My name is David Hart. I live at one fifty-five Fifty Acre Way. I know some of you. I was going to do this uh via Zoom, but my wife works for the mosquito and she's covering the uh school committee meeting, I guess in Concord, as a reporter, so we can't do two Zooms in our house. So.
You got the shorts, true.
Well. Uh, this is my new neighbor. It's Angel.
Angel, yeah.
Angel, yes, we've, we've exchanged emails.
Yes, sir.
And so um this is a copy, I'm just going to read it, of what I wrote to our neighbors and keep it succinct. Hello, Fifty Acre Way neighbors. We are in Orphan Street. Um, here are my thoughts in no particular order. And by the way, we've lived here on Fifty Acre Way for twenty-seven years, so this topic is not new to me. I agree would be a good idea for all of us to attend the meeting either in person or in Zoom. There have been other town meetings where everyone from Fifty Acre Way showed up along with a bunch of other orphaned streets. Yes, the Comcast contract is being renegotiated, but Comcast could care less about our street. And I understand from their perspective, from a financial point of view of why. Um, there are six houses on our street. All the utilities are underground, there are conservation restrictions, and it's a private road. The payback time is forever. There's no return on investment. I've been here with Comcast in this room. Um, in my opinion, the chances of Comcast or Sue, any, any company coming down our street is close, if not zero, because of the payback. Um, right now, a couple of us use VSAT for internet access. It's bad, but it's not as bad as the high-speed DSL we used to have. Uh, um, Verizon has run fiber throughout the town of Carlisle, which is an earlier point. Um, including the telephone pole at the top of our street. The town of Carlisle actually, I guess, I forget what Sue's term was, but they, they get a, the town of Carlisle gets a commission to get this capped at five percent of revenue. I, I, I just heard that. I didn't know. Um, but Verizon, just so y'all know, doesn't pay a dime. I've talked to Verizon. I've talked to the service guys. I've verified where the fiber is. I've called the home office. I've talked to Verizon. They're running up and down Lowell Road. They don't pay towns any money. They don't. Not Carlisle, not anybody in Mozambique. It doesn't matter. I met with the cable advisory committee at the town of Carlisle, and they don't seem to be too concerned. I think the best near-term option is to attempt to sign up for Elon Musk's new satellite company, Starlink. Already did that. And uh, VSAT filed a, what I'll call a meritless lawsuit, saying it was, their satellites were environmental danger. So that sort of got hung up. Um, so they, you know. So, and then I said in the email, if anybody has any, any, any good options, I'm all ears. Um, and when I hear this ten years, you know, I might be dead in ten years. I don't know if I'll be living in Carlisle in ten years. I'm sixty-two. But I brought this as a prop. Does anybody know what this is?
Stable.
Right. It's a wire staple. This is how the town of Concord attaches cables to a tree in my brother's yard and other yards. Comes off a phone pole. It goes to a tree. This is what they use. Theirs happen to be black. This is what they use. So think about it.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
They went, you know, there's a conservation restriction on where you put stuff.
Yeah.
And, and, and I would say in this case, to Angel's point, um, I have a well. That's how I get water, electricity. That's buried. That's important. But so is, is internet access. Um, it all runs on the same cable, just so you all know. Uh, you know, before it was all so you'd get, you know, some sort of TV channel, but that's not what it is anymore. Um, and I've been here through a number of meetings. I'm going to be conservative and tell you twenty-five percent of Carlisle does not have broadband or internet access. Twenty-five percent. What if we got organized? How many of you have broadband? Yeah, you don't have the problems.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess the broader question is what? It's always my question on these things. What leverage do we actually have in these negotiations?
Have none.
Right, so what's the point of all this?
Well, um, I think we do have.
Letting it go.
Well.
I think, I think if I could just adhere up for a second, I think, I think that we, we do have leverage.
Yeah.
I don't think necessarily we want to talk through those right here prior to negotiating with Comcast. Um, but I think that, you know, we, we absolutely do have some leverage and we have some sources uh that, you know, we could potentially use, but I think I'm not sure we want to talk about those now. Um, other than to say, I am fully supportive of trying to get cable to as many more houses as possible in Carlisle. I've heard about this, you know, the entire time I've been on the select board. I've been waiting for this contract to come due for renewal so that we can make a difference and, and add more houses.
Nathan, thank you for that. And I, I think everything you said is deadly accurate. In, in my working career, I spent ten years at AT&amp;T. I understand it from the other side of the coin. And if you look at my street in particular, I got, there's six houses on our street. What's the payback for Comcast to put cable in what's got buried utilities, conservation restrictions, and everything else? What's the payback for them? What's the ROI? There isn't one. It'd be their grandchildren who might get it. So if we're talking ten-year terms, this isn't going to happen.
Yeah, I, I totally understand. I have the same exact experience with a family place in another town where they're just like, no way, we're not going to do it. Um, so I totally feel where you are and uh, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we are going to do whatever we can to add it.
I wish you the best of luck, but I just wanted to express my, my thoughts and frustrations. I've been doing this for ten years.
Yeah, Kate.
Sue, I have a question about page fifteen in the, in the draft about section three point one area to be served. In fact, which addresses this whole idea of taking a survey of how many houses that are over two and hundred and fifty feet from the street um, and things like that. Um, and so I'm just um, and I was wondering if um, there were some way that, you know, we're getting um some ARPA money, and that is one of the things that I, I understand is that we can use it for.
Okay.
Right?
That's a good idea.
Uh, is to um, bring better internet to our town. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't do our written request uh to conduct, to the licensee to conduct that survey to determine the number of dwelling units and, you know, and see if we can get that going, or, uh, unless I'm re- misreading this.
Yeah, okay. No, uh, i- in fact, one of the things that we have talked about, this issue came up um in January when I did the first briefing for the selectman uh board at that time. And uh, looking at the obligations in the license agreement, number one, you have a line extension policy and a current license agreement is, which is ancient, okay? It's sixty homes per mile for aerial and s- aerial and thirty for underground or vice versa. Um, typical now is number one, ten homes per mile, okay, ten to fifteen. In fact, there was just a circuit court decision uh in the First Circuit uh based on a new main law that requires it to be down to fifty, fifteen homes per mile. So there's a lot of things going for us on this issue. But to the end, it's a point you're making. We have every right to ask the cable operators to provide mapping and show us where they're serving and where they're not. Okay, and so one of the things that we, part of any negotiating process on a point like this would be to do, have those sorts of information exchanges and compare that to the data. So that's all part of, as, as Nathan has brought up, some of the things we'll be working on as part of the negotiations, but we're, it's a little preliminary. We certainly understand that the issue as the report points out, it's certainly something that we will be looking very closely with, look with, with um both internally and, and with the cable operator as well. So, and as back to the ARPA point, uh, yes, there is a possibility that this town could say, well, we're going to figure out a way of using that money to help facilitate service elsewhere in the city where you can't get it. But I think again, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves on that till we're a little deeper into our discussions.
Any other comments?
I, I just have a quick question. Have you guys ever, you know, talked with uh Comcast and said, how much is it to run it? I mean, have they given you a, and it's probably astronomical. It's like talking to National Grid and trying to get gas running. And then it's.
A couple of people did it one back ten years, so my numbers go off.
Dan, would you mind, so people can hear? Thanks.
Yeah, my name is David Hart, Fifty Acre Way, addressing the question of what it would cost me to do it privately. Um, my figures are ten years old. I have a folder this thick. I didn't bother to bring it because it's old news. Who cares? Uh, it's about twenty-six thousand dollars per household.
Oh, per household?
Per household. By the time we were done with it, yeah, twenty-six thousand per household.
Well, it's even more than.
Give me a roll of, of cable.
Hey! We, if we could have got, if we could have legally done it with conservation restrictions.
You can just lay that stuff, by the way, right on the ground. It does not have to be buried.
We were told thirty thousand dollars in the house.
Yeah.
Go back.
Our former neighbor Turks, a man did a whole study. He published the whole thing. I think some of it was, is public record.
I, I have to tell you, my cable was over on top of the ground until our meeting uh where I was complaining about my cable not having been buried and it magically got buried.
Well, yeah, we, we paid to plow our own road, all that kind of stuff. I don't want to, you got, you have to go over driveways. Our logistics are interesting.
Okay, I'm just saying.
But I, but I mean, I was curious just because, you know, is this one of those things where Comcast just doesn't want to do it and they give you an astronomical number? Or, you know, so maybe this is where we can leverage ARPA funds and, you know, I mean, just, just an idea to.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to, exactly, what I'm thinking.
And so, look, we're not going to pay you twenty-six thousand, but Jesus, come back with a reasonable number.
That's what I was thinking.
And, and also too, I, we do have a map, don't we? I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember a map with little yellow lines on it that.
It's in the study, actually, that they provided.
So David, you you brought the little cable staple in and you didn't really answer my question. Is that smarter of Concord to just do a cheap O A or not?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I just was over at my brother's house. It was on there, so hell, and, or, I was looking at the what the hell did you get that? You know, and there's this thing in his tree, comes off a phone pole, goes in, and goes up to his house. It's stapled to a pine tree in his front yard.
They have Comcast?
I think they have their own.
Yeah, yeah, it's municipal.
Even their cable is municipal? So they can get away with it. It doesn't cost them twenty-six thousand. Um, uh, Sue, why is there so much in this packet about P E G and M M N? What does that really have to do with this?
What is P E G?
Okay, um, part of law, the, the current license agreement and part of most license agreements in the state of Massachusetts. In fact, it's uh, there's some things mandated by state laws to have channels available strictly for community, for the, for the meetings like this. For school activities, for community-based content that's just about Carlisle, okay? The kind of things that you don't, can't get anywhere else. And what we look at when we do a needs assessment is, under law, we are obligated to take a look at what community cable-related needs and interest are. And those include not only the sorts of things you've been talking about, which has to do with providing, making sure services available to all or as many people in the community as possible, but also making sure that there is the ability for the community to have a channel or channels that can be used strictly for community use. So part of the work of uh preparing to sit down at the negotiating table is to go through a process, not only of identifying where we had, do or do not have service, but also to find out what is available for community programming right now, what people might be interested in having in the future, so as to permit us to have the opportunity to sit down and improve the services from what they currently are now. Um, and so that's part of what we look at in the needs assessment process. P E G stands for Public Education and Government Programming or Access. In today's world, we call it community programming. Uh, P E G is just a term of art that's been used under law for many years.
Right, so I get it that, you know, if lots of people use it, which this survey suggests, not a lot of people use it. Uh, you might need more than one channel, but what does it have to do with whether M N, M M N, or some other equivalent fills a need? Is that, does that have anything to do with what Comcast is providing?
Yes, that has everything to do with what Comcast is providing. Because if Comcast is not providing certain resources to whomever the city determines they want to have provide that community-based service, cable company doesn't, they provide the channels and they provide funding, but they don't actually run it.
No, I know that.
Okay, so what, and, and i- if I might continue. Um, so right now, the city has, has Minuteman Media, which is a department of the city of Concord and under contract to run the channels. But that, but the funding to run those channels comes from Comcast. So the relationship here is, is that is we need to find out, number one, is the funding and the number, the number of channels correct, correct? Is the connectivity to go live from different places for community events around the community, is that in place? That's something Comcast can do. But once you have maybe appropriate resources for the company, who is going to provide that service? And so that is why M N N, as part of what we need to look at, is what uh, what is the best manner in which to have that service available to Ca- Ca- to Carlisle, okay? Is it Carlisle doing it themselves? Is it M N N? It, there are a number of options. And so what we look at when we look at for, uh, the license renewal process is the resources necessary to provide the services, okay, and the manner in which those services are provided.
Any other comments?
So what I've heard loud and clear from this public hearing is we need to try to extend it as much you know, additional as we possibly can. I think the mechanisms and how we do that, we should kind of take offline.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think um, all of the members of the select board fully support um, doing everything we can in this licensing process to extend coverage to more people in Carlisle. All right, anything more, Sue or Jenny, that you want?
What are the action items?
Pardon?
What are the next steps? Hearing that in two weeks or whatever, what's the?
Yeah, Sue, do you want to walk through the next steps for us?
Yeah, the next steps will be, um, uh, in two weeks, I'll be um presenting of, doing a more thorough present- presentation. A presentation period, because we really haven't done a presentation on the needs assessment document at all. So we're going to be doing that at the meeting. And then um, at, at, and that will be part of the public process. And then we'll, we will likely have a executive session about contract negotiations with Comcast, okay?
That meeting is our meeting or some other meeting?
So, yeah, that's the select board meeting you're talking about, two weeks.
That, that is correct. That's my understanding from the conversations that Tim and, and Jenny and I had, is that, that's the next step. And then after that, then we dive deep into uh proceeding with the negotiations.
Okay.
And then is an executive session follow that?
Yeah, that's what you're suggesting on that same night that we would also.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
All right, so we will, um, Tim and David and I will discuss this uh in a couple of day after tomorrow and figure out the agenda for two weeks from now, and we'll get back to you about scheduling.
Okay.
All right.
I, I just, in a personal request, if we could make the executive session and the overview as close to each other as possible, because I will be out of the country and I'll have to dial in.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Sue would prefer that too, right?
Well, I, I, I'm here whenever it works for you. I can make it work. He's in the country. I can understand that.
So Jenny, you'll be part of that conversation as well?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Sue, uh, so this draft, what is this draft? Is that their draft?
No, no, uh, what draft are you talking about now? So I'm sure.
Packet, the draft.
That, that is the draft of the needs assessment document. That is a document that we prepared for, under contract for this town, which is part of the federal and state license renewal process. It provides documentation and information and public input documentation that then will be used as the foundation for the justification for things that will be negotiated toward in the new license agreement.
But it says draft renewal license. It doesn't say that.
It's that, that is the draft of the needs assessment for the license renewal process.
There are two documents in the packet. One, one is the formal renewal proposal from Comcast.
That's, oh, that's the confusion. Okay.
This is their opening shot.
That's their opening shot, Sue's draft, community needs assessment.
No, I understand. This is a license. It's, it's a draft license.
Proposed, right.
As they refer.
So so the, just so we're clear, so that's why I asked what document were you speaking to? So we have, we have a proposal from Comcast. Now we'll be taking that proposal. And I And, and again, it's one of the things that, that I think there's a lot of confusion around. We are not obligated to do, take that proposal. They are obligated by law to give it to us. We then take that language and we look at what we currently have, we look at what we want, and out the other end of that comes the final agreement. That's what the negotiations create.
And Jenny, you, you are the drafter of that when we get to that point?
Yeah, well, it'll be a collaborative effort with me and Sue and, and I'm sure Comcast.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, David, come on up.
This is directed at Sue.
David, could you mind coming to the? Yeah, sorry, just so everybody on the Zoom can hear.
All right, this is a question. This is for you, Sue, and probably Eugene, or is it Jenny? I apologize. Anyways, I'm in sales, what I do for a living. And you're talking about like a single source almost here with Comcast, because that's the existing license agreement. They have the leverage, I get that. But Verizon has run infrastructure everywhere around here.
Yeah.
Letting them know that they've got competition is going to bring the price down, I know.
The, the reality we have here, and I've been doing this for 40 years, okay? And one of the things that I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I've heard it, I can't even tell you how many hundreds of times before. Why don't we have, why doesn't Verizon have a franchise agreement?
Right.
It's, it's up to Verizon. They can choose to apply it for a license agreement or not. They've chosen not to.
Try getting a bus contract in this town, not through.
Listen, God love all of you.
No, it's, it's de facto monopoly. It's, it's collusion. They just don't, they don't pee in each other's yards. They just don't.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a process question. So this is a public hearing. Should we extend this public hearing to our next meeting at a time, or just go ahead and close this public hearing, or is this not that type of public hearing?
Tim, what's your read?
Well, I thought I heard Sue say we would potentially take input at a future date, so that would argue for continuing it.
Yeah, will we continue?
Jenny has any thoughts on that, or do you?
Yeah, I think if we want to continue taking public comment, then we should keep it open.
I, I think we do want to continue, so it's kind of a rhetorical question I was asking.
It should be certain then, so, so. No, we know it's two weeks. So, okay, so I move that we continue this meeting to, yeah, do you want 28? But we have to do it aside, at a time.
7:05.
No, I mean, you want it at the end of the agenda.
That's right. Oh, my God, that's going to put it like three in the morning. Okay.
No, we have to, at a time to be finalized.
No, his time will be three in the morning.
Well, his time, no, that's so sad.
Well, why don't we do it earlier? Why couldn't we do it first thing?
Because you want executive, you want to have executive.
Well, I guess you'd have to pause the meeting in the middle.
Pause the meeting in the middle, you know, it's been done before.
Pause the meeting for half an hour.
To return to open session.
You know what, let's, we got to rack and stack all the stuff we got. Let's, can't we just say the time to be determined, you know, in, there'll be plenty of notice given to people.
Is that all? Okay, do it that way? Okay.
So continue the meeting to September 28.
Is there a second?
Do we have to second, or that's it?
Do we have to vote on it? Yeah.
Tim, yeah, so, there a second?
A second.
All right, any more discussion? About keeping the hearing open? All right, I'm calling for a roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye. Okay, excellent. We'll continue the hearing in two weeks.
Thank you.
See you then.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Bye. Jenny.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank, I know this is not easy stuff. Yeah, thank you for your hard work. Yeah, I appreciate it very much.
And I'm really glad to have your input. I know it's difficult. I know it's really difficult. Yeah.
David, say hi to Sarah for me.
I wouldn't do that. Remember your first name easily.
Yep, she's my buddy and region.
All right, all right, so we're going to continue then.
What's the yellow? That's where we do have service?
Where we have it, yeah.
That's a lot.
Yes.
What is everybody complaining about?
All right, well, let's move on, everybody. We're, we're a little bit behind schedule, so let's move on. And we're going to take up the appointments that we have here. Let's start with the Public Safety Building Committee. Who would like to make a motion about the two nominees for that committee?
Motion was Ms. Type, but I'll read it. Oh, my God, move to appoint Jerome Lerman, quote, 218 Stern Street and William Rizzo at 155 Wolf Rock Road to serve on the Public Safety Building Committee with an indefinite term.
All right.
Rest for the wicked. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Congratulations is the right word, or condone?
Congratulations to Jerry and Bill. All righty, let's go up and do the Affordable Housing Trust nomination.
I'll move to appoint Mark Levitan, 105 Wolf Rock Road, to serve on the Affordable Housing Trust with a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And then the Cultural Council.
Move to accept the resignation of Kenny Seltzer from Carlisle Cultural Council effective immediately. And we need a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye. I move to appoint Deborah Bentley on Hill Road to serve on the Cultural Council for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye.
And the Municipal Facilities Committee. Who'd like to make this motion?
I'm, is it Christine?
No, it's Carrie Patel.
I move to appoint Carrie Patel
to the
to the Municipal Facilities Committee to serve as the Carlisle School Committee Rep with term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye.
Excellent, thank you all. That is approved unanimously.
A lot of people.
Okay, let's move on to the Cemetery Deeds.
Luke's favorite. Bargain until he gets a chance at it.
Okay, I move that the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Doug Edwards, Westford, Massachusetts former Carlisle resident at Green Cemetery, Lot D 199, Graves 1, 2, and 3. And I'm going to move all these deeds at once. Deed 760, I move that the select board vote to transfer land to the public burial ground to Barry D and Louise Henderson, 559 Lowell Street at Green Cemetery, Lot D 206, Graves 1 and 2. Deed 761, I move that the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Robert and Mary Lou Carnegie, 45 Action Street, Green Cemetery, Lot D 200, Graves 1 and 2. Indeed, 762, move that the select board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Gary and June Davis, Lancaster, Mass, at Green Cemetery, Lot D 189, Graves 1 and 2.
We're planning on something.
Second.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, do we need to know something? Because geez, seems like we're having a run on.
Yeah, really?
They know the rates are going to go up. Yeah, they know it's by now, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
What's it gotten out there?
The word's gotten out. You want to talk about the cost?
Exactly.
Yeah, all righty, roll call vote. Arnold, aye?
Askalala, aye.
Brown, aye?
Ode, aye.
Read aye.
Excellent, those are approved. All right, let's look at the Select Board Goals, which are in our packet.
They came after the town administrator one, which was surprising.
Below the town administrator goals, but.
Before we do, are we, are we fully built out on the Public Safety Building Committee?
No.
No, we got two out of seven.
We have two, and we do have, we have two more in the wings.
We got stores, Rizzo, West, and Lerman so far?
No, no, we don't have. No, we haven't approved West or stores. They are in, they're, we hope they're coming.
Two of seven.
It's up to seven.
No, but two approved.
Yes, two approved.
These are the first two.
Yes.
Taking that paper cut off.
Yes. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're just formally going to adopt the fiscal year 2022 goals for the select board. And so if someone would make that motion, that would be helpful.
It's on a roll, I heard.
And they're in our packet.
They didn't really change from last week, right?
No, they have not changed.
You just didn't vote.
And they're on page 184 in the packet.
And there's no motion on the thing.
No, there is not.
So I move to adopt the fiscal year 2022 goals for the select board as presented this evening. That, I guess it is, there was a portion there, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so any discussion about this?
Is there a final formal document? We should have that, right?
It's in your packet on page 184.
They didn't write the packet this way.
No, 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 184. I see the town administrator goal.
No, it's below that.
Why is it below that?
Yes, because sometimes they come out that way.
Okay, all right, got it.
Keeping us on our toes, yeah. So I, I would just say that we need to, and given the time tonight, 9:09, how are we doing?
We're doing good.
Want to talk about Tim's goals. We may not want to get into this at length, but I would like to focus on some of the short-term, the short-term action steps we've, we've listed and figure out who is going to move those forward. What, who's going to take some action to realize these goals? And I can say, I will start by just offering that I would be happy to create work on creating the environment, under the environmental sustainability, to create the Environmental Sustainability Committee, charged with specific measurable action steps. There are a number of people that I think would be interested in doing this, and I know we need to create a specific charge as well. But are you going to try to roll in our current old?
Energy Task Force members. Well, not necessarily their members, but, you know, the kind of the group of.
Of what they're doing?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So that we don't have a gazillion committees and they're all doing the same thing.
If you'll recall, that committee is on hold. And so I think this proposal is saying we would allow that committee to disband and then we would create a new group that's going to include what they were working on.
Right, okay, that's.
Yeah. And then, and the other piece of this, which maybe, Nathan, if I remember correctly, this was something you were talking about, which is under that environmental sustainability, that we figure out a way to provide some kind of document that, that boards and committees would look at when they're thinking about new projects or making decisions about something the, to, so that they would have to look at the environmental impact, which is sort of in the, in the sentences above the short-term action steps.
Yep.
Is that something you're going to work with me on?
Uh, yes. Yeah, certainly.
Great.
What did he sign for? You're not going in, you want to go in order of the?
Yeah, I was just trying to start with getting the, the ball rolling by saying what, what I would be interested in working on. So if you want to go back to financial sustainability, we had some discussion just now with the FinCom, and so we agreed we were going to put together a small informal group.
I'd be happy to serve on that.
Okay. Anybody else from the select board one? All right, so that's Kate and David. All right. And the second short-term one is develop a long-term goal regarding tax increases, which
Yeah, I think that's close from the first one.
That's sort of connected, right, to the first one? So we'll put, we'll put the two of you then for, for under financial sustainability. All right, that's great. And then you go down to citizen engagement. So, short-term, we have the select board meeting with every committee at least once a year. We have reviewing the committee charter and.
The committee of each of those committees or our committee?
No, the, I think the charter of each committee.
That's part of those meetings, I guess, right?
Yeah, and then the, the last one is more broad, explore methods of outreach regarding opportunities for involvement in town and to increase participation.
For the first two, for the first two, could we just ask the liaison of that committee to work with them to, and, and work with you to get them scheduled and to, you know, kind of leave the charter part for there, so that it's not one person trying to do everyone?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense to me. Are other people okay with that? Right, that the liaison to the various committees is going to be?
I already started that with, with mine and, and even the third one, I think. Christine, are you still on? No. So I talked to Christine and to Jim O'Shea about, you know, outreach stuff. So, yeah, I agree. I agree with Nathan.
So, all right, so the liaisons are going to be responsible for working with Tim about scheduling their liaison group to become, talk with the select board, or potentially we could go to them if that made sense. And at the same time, review the charter and have that, that committee be part of the reviewing.
I do think we're going, we should, I don't know if we did it. We should, we should do this just ourselves to get it started, but we should look at all the committees there are and decide, is it once a year, twice a year, and none times a year?
Yeah.
Because, you know, things are going to get very busy here.
Right, yeah.
I mean, FinCom, obviously, school committee, obviously, but.
And municipal facilities as well, anything that.
We got to get on, we got to start framing out our calendar when we're going to do this, because we're going to run out of time.
So maybe that should be something, David, that you and I work through with Tim and Jen's help. Looking at the, all the committees and which ones are kind of priority. Okay, and then from there, the liaisons could take over. Getting something scheduled, reviewing the charter. And number three, I think that's worth a select board conversation as a group.
I think there's a group thing. I mean, we've had a couple of ideas. We talked about having a cable at Old Home Day, which has then subsequently been canceled, but.
Right. Right.
I'm sure we can come up with, you know, maybe we can have one at the spaghetti supper, who knows?
Right.
Is there going to be spaghetti supper?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just.
Right. Okay, yeah, so let's, let's agree that we will put that on a future select board agenda and not have that wait too long to get on the agenda. And then the final one, or not the final one, the next one is quality of education. So short-term, David, I think this is one you've already been working on. And so we have the school CPS, this Carlisle School Committee coming.
We got to figure it out, yeah. We have some disconnect.
We have to work that out, right, right, okay.
By the way, they're doing their goal setting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, good. And then we said work with the school committees to identify a shared vision and long-term goals for education of Carlisle students. Presumably that could be part of what we do when we're having our meetings with them.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we should have a, develop sort of a standard, maybe set of questions we give these committees ahead of time. You know, like charter, you know, what do you go, like? know, what are your go, like, how do your goals, is your charter up to date?
Yeah, have you read your charter?
You read your charter, is it up to date? How do your goals align with the charter? How would you change it?
Are you still doing that?
Right, okay.
So we got, yeah, I think we have some work to do here, but.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
And then the town staff alignment, which is also included in Tim's goals.
I think these are all really closely related, and I'd be happy to take them on working with Tim.
All right, I'd be interested in doing that as well.
Have we set a time for number three yet?
Pardon?
The formal gathering with the staff?
No.
We talked about it.
Yeah, and I love number four below, create a mechanism for celebrating excellence. Want to move ahead on that. Luke, do you have any particular area that you want to work on?
I do not.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's enough on that for tonight.
I'm sorry, who's, who's on on that last one?
Um, parts of it will be you and me and Kate as well is interested in parts of this, so the town staff alignment.
Okay, unfortunately, it can't be three of us.
Oh, right, right, okay.
It depends on, you know, you can slice and dice.
Yeah, why don't we sort that out offline or, you know, outside the meeting? We can figure that one out.
You know, because Barney and I already started and have been working.
With the goal setting and the performance reviews.
Yeah, and so I think we should, I would like to spend another, you know, a year to finish up with that since.
Okay, I can take two, three, and four then. We can't figure it out later, Barney, because there's three of us talking about it. We have to do it.
Well, I, no, scheduling is perfectly, that, this kind of thing is perfectly fine to do outside of a meeting, doesn't violate open meeting law to figure out assignments. Yeah, but let's, let's go with that, that Kate and I will do number one, and.
Tim and Nathan can do two, three, and four.
Yeah, and Tim and Nathan could work on two, three, and four. All right, great. So let's move to Tim's goals for fiscal year 22, which is just above the, oh, wait, no, no, we need to, we didn't actually vote, did we, to approve our goals?
No, but it's seconded.
Okay, it's seconded, so can we, let's move ahead then to taking a vote on approving the Select Board goals for FY '22 as written in the packet. Roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Brown, aye.
I'm gonna lie.
You, aye.
Excellent, thank you, passes unanimously. And so let's go back up to the town administrators' fiscal year 22 goals, and Tim, please give us, walk us through your, your goals here and why you chose them.
Okay, I worked a bit with Mark Way on reducing some of these goals for writing, which is still a bit of a work in progress, but anyway, under information technology, my goal, working with the Technology Working Group, would be to expand the IT support services town-wide through a third-party vendor. We're gonna be meeting with our vendor, DriveTech, in a couple of weeks' time to, to review a proposal from them to expand their services. Also, our next project on the horizon is a, a new townwide phone system, but we're not moving too quickly in that direction. Things change in that field quite often, and, and we want to take a measured approach to that. The Technology Working Group, we're also gonna be meeting with Superintendent O'Shea and Technology Manager Scott Hefner in a week or two. They're very interested in talking with us about an arrangement for collaboration and shared services. I, I don't want to put words in Jim's mouth, but I, I think he would much rather perform an, prefer an informal arrangement with the town than to guarantee a certain number of hours of, you know, his tech guy to the town. He, he'd rather do it on a, not a case-by-case basis, but as the need arises and as the ability to assist exists, he'd rather not formalize it in such a way that it would potentially curtail or, or hold back the school in any fashion, and so we'll be meeting with them and, and talking about that also, as we talk with DriveTech. And also, reaching out to neighboring communities for support and different ideas regarding technology. I met with the town manager in Concord last week regarding the prospect of broadband service and whether that was something that could be potentially provided in the future. They're very much interested in expanding their broadband footprint, however, they've had reliability issues as of late, so it is not particularly a good time to talk about expanding that service, but they're, they're very interested in that. Also, they're very interested in talking about regional dispatch, so there are opportunities for those.
Before you go on, Tim, a few questions. So on that last one, does that, did that sweep away the Comcast issue? Concord provided it? Is there any bar to competition of Comcast, Concord coming in, or just?
No, because in order for that to work, we would have to run fiber to every house ourselves.
Okay, so that's.
This is just, this is just public, public buildings.
So on the IT side, first of all, who's on the working group, Technology Working Group?
It's myself, Nathan, Bill Rizzo, and David Mackay at this point in time.
Okay. And I remember that, Nathan, I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, proposed, because we were having a hard time finding an IT full-time professional, to talk to DriveTech about expanding services, which I'm not sure that, whether that's this or that's something else.
Yeah, that, that is this.
Okay, so I do think that that's great, but that, when, that the Technology Working Group and you ought to actually come up with a spec of what you want and should bid it. I mean, at that point, how much do we pay DriveTech now?
It's about $50,000 or $60,000 a year.
Okay. And we had placeholder for 100K for a person, right?
I think it's 75.
Yeah, we got 75 in the budget.
75?
Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna get an IT person for 75?
So far, we're not. We've advertised it for two months now and haven't had a single application.
Okay, so with that, even just saying that, that's 125K, so I think, I mean, certainly interested in what DriveTech has to say because they know us and blah, 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 but, you know, there's lots of providers. I mean, I think there ought to be a more, what I'm saying is before you plunge in, there ought to be a formal process, right? We ought to RFP it and.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna be making any decisions. We do meet with DriveTech periodically to.
That's fine, if you're a vendor, that's fine.
Review town services, and we wanted to talk with them.
Well, I think it's great, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, maybe I don't need to say it, but I, I believe we should, once we, once you have a better understanding of, say, what DriveTech can offer, what a service provider could offer, and what.
In age, are we ought to. Yeah, no, it, it's, it's such a dollar value that it's not just.
Okay, God.
Yeah. Also, a couple of these are dependent somewhat on what town governance task force recommends. Some of these goals were started some time ago and, and before that committee came into being, but I talked to Mark about the, the position of a land use coordinator that would coordinate the efforts of the planning board, the ConSCOM, Board of Health, and, and, you know, maybe under the building department or, you know, in conjunction with. I think there'd be improved efficiencies, certainly there'd be an opportunity to share the workload among the various administrative personnel. I think it would provide a better service to the public, frankly. But again, you know, that, some of this ground that the task force is, is treading currently, so I don't want to get in front of them or impede their progress, but I would like to monitor what they're working on and, and help them in any.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't add a position here until we heard from the governance people about how they want to organize the boards, right?
Exactly, right, we, similarly, succession planning is something that I've been thinking about the past few years, and retirements that we were predicting started to happen, the planning administrators retired, the accountants retiring. So I think we need to look at, you know, not perhaps replacing, you know, like for like, but maybe we, we'd want a town engineer someday instead of a highway superintendent or PPW director, or maybe we'd want to hire a sanitarian to run the Board of Health someday, you know, different things like that. I, I, I pointed out the need for increased HR presence in the Selectment Office and proposed creating that position last year, the Assistant Town Administrator with specialty in HR resources. I, I do think I'll make that presentation this year again to the Finance Committee. I think my, my point in all this is that, you know, we ought to be thinking about, you know, people going out the door in the next few years and.
Right, so.
What that's gonna look like.
So we're, we're talking about the fiscal '23 budget then, right?
Yes, right.
And, yeah, so I think in bullet number two, rather than, say, a, you know, land use coordinator, I really think the broad brush, just take a look at the succession plan, like you were, you said, I, I line up more with what you said than what you wrote. Me reading it, I'm like, all right, another position gets slapped on top, but hearing you speak, I agree with that. You know, you've got retirements, you have a chance to remake the way they work together, and not just a land use coordinator, but to your point.
And that could be one of, one of the existing.
So maybe I would suggest more broadly, come up with kind of your vision of the way town hall should be organized, you know, in the future. I mean, I don't know how that, Kate, I gotta look at you here, how does, how does all that dovetail with what Wayne's group's gonna do? Are they gonna get to this granularity?
I have no idea, none at all. I really don't.
But I mean, it's Tim's shop, he ought to be able to.
Yeah, it is, it is Tim's shop, and he needs to have his vision.
The task force has just reached out to the department heads and town officials, they're starting a series of interviews now with, probably taking input from various sources, so, you know, I intend to discuss a lot of that, of that stuff with them at that time. Another goal that I think is, you know, kind of well underway, enhance the working relationship between the town administrator and the Select Board. We do have regular.
Depends on who you ask.
Regular follow-up with the chair and vice chair. In between meetings, I think we've provided better visibility into upcoming agenda, and we've done a pretty good job, I think, of making sure that the materials are provided in a timely way, improving, improving that process. And I think that this, next thing, I think, I think we alluded to earlier that we, we use each of you as liaisons to the various boards to, you know, organize or invite different boards to get on our agenda, and I, I would be scheduling them for future meetings rather than making the contacts myself I'd be using. You know, your close relationships as liaisons to meet with a given board.
Yeah, we do. It's chicken scratch.
Well, my bad, we're chicken scratch at the park. Chicken scratch, make out my else, sorry.
And, no, no, that's fine. And again, I think there, there may be parallel efforts out there for a merger of sorts of town and school facilities and maintenance. Looked into this a little bit, and, and again, the superintendent's very interested in meeting on this, and he, they're making some structural changes to the way they manage facilities and making changes with staff, so I think, you know, it may be a, a good time to discuss changes, how we do that, but, you know, we.
Can I make one comment on this one, Tim?
Yep.
I think that there's, I, I, I think I would just reword this a little bit, because there's too much out of your control to make sure that by the spring of '22, the town and school facilities departments were merged?
Well, it's a goal, and if he doesn't make it, that's okay.
Yeah, I think, well, it, it may just be, you know, putting in place the, there's an enabling act in general laws that it has to be voted by town meeting before you can even complete such a, you know, consolidation of maintenance activities, so that, that might be the goal for a town meeting, spring, to kind of make that, that possibility, you know?
So I would just make it, sorry, I think you just explained how it's not possible that it would be done by spring '22. It's just this, the way this is worded.
Totally, but.
It's gonna be done, you know, that this goal is that you will have completed it within this time period. I'm just not sure that that, I think I would just reword it a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, I take your point that, yeah.
You don't want to, you don't want to have goals that are not attainable.
Or maybe the way you frame this is that you will work, work on the, whatever bylaw changes or whatever the right wording is for what needs to be approved by town meeting in order to allow the merger of town and school facilities.
Right, right, no, I, I, I'll take another crack at, at restating that. And, and on an informal basis, we're already doing some things to consolidate procurements and to develop a list of trade, you know, people in the trades that help the town and the schools and comparatively bid and use the same list of vendors for different services. And a lot of that, you know, frankly, the, the good, the good work of Rob Furtado at the school and Steve Bastek here at town hall. But, you know, I think we're, we've already taken steps in that direction, it may take a while to get there, I do think it's the way we want to handle, you know, facilities and maintenance going forward.
Yeah, and I completely agree with that, it's just, you know, you started off with Jim O'Shea, you know, would prefer to have it informal, but, you know, here's a goal for you doing it formally.
I didn't understand his reservations about losing, you know.
Right. So I think maybe, maybe something in here about, you know, that, that that's where you're starting or something like that, rather than you're completing it, but I think I made my point.
Yep, thank you. And then I adopted Barney's suggestion, the town staff alignment goal from the, the board's goals, also discussed the performance evaluation process, which is underway this year, and we're just committed to working together, Nathan, on making a few of these things happen. I think an informal gathering of the staff with the board, I think honestly would go a long way, you know, toward, I don't know if I should say improving relations, but establishing relations, I think, a lot of times the board isn't familiar with the staff.
You should do it while the weather's still nice enough to go.
Yeah, well, exactly, if we're gonna take advantage of the outdoors. So I, I did adopt that, some of the goals, you know, I think I might have added a couple of these after the packets went in, but anyway, I, I do want to develop a work at home policy. I think we had it sort of thrust upon us with the pandemic, we didn't have a policy, and I think we went from having about, you know, two laptops in the whole building to about 25 and everybody working remotely and.
Did the town provide those or the people provided their own?
No, no, the, the town provided those under the CARES Act, so we didn't want people working on their own devices, and, and, you know, it, it's got positives and, and negatives. Some people, I think, feel that working remotely is some kind of divine right at this point, that it's, it's something beyond the control of the managers. So I think we need a, a policy to kind of rationalize what, you know, when it's appropriate. Certainly, a lot of functions don't have to be performed.
Well, I agree with you, you need to be consistent, just because somebody is on a public-facing job and is supposed to be here X days a week. on a public-facing job and is supposed to do here X days a week, and so you're not a public-facing job and get away with it. You need to be consistent.
Yeah.
I want to also wrap that thought back up into the IT, you know, and I've said it before. When you're working remotely, and it's because you have company-provided laptops, information-provided laptops, but you've got to, one of the things you can talk to Drive Tech about, you've got to take, you've got to take a hard look at your cyber controls. I mean, there's municipality after municipality that's getting shaken down with ransomware. You know, the more people work off-site and they're on their own system, or they're in Starbucks and they open the laptop and use the public Wi-Fi. It's all conducive to, to getting infected or. I think you've got to develop those in parallel when you, when you consider. Good suggestion. There must be best practices in municipalities on using like two-factor authentication for people to log in, for example. You log in at home, do you have two-factor authentication?
No, I don't.
Because you lose your laptop, you leave your laptop, somebody hits in and it's over, so. I mean, that's one of the cheapest, simplest things you can do.
That goes for Carlisle, how boring, huh?
No, but it, it's true, right?
It just takes one Russian.
Well, but what happens too is, you know, people, you know, you tend, the, the work laptop kind of turns into the personal laptop, right?
There's that, there's also those policies, right?
But I mean, yeah, I mean, that's another infection path, is when people
Right.
download attachments. I mean, really, honestly, what we have now, you don't download any external attachment, you just don't. There's too much on the laptop. And then lastly, kind of personnel-related goal I've been discussing with the, the personnel board and, and with other members of this board. Hiring a consultant to refresh the wage scale, to do a wage survey. It's been a number of years since we did the last adjustment, and in conjunction with that, taking kind of a hiatus on the the re-gratings and the new job descriptions, it's become a bit of a contest, people rewriting job descriptions to try to bump up ratings, and the, the personnel board is frustrated with that as well, and I think maybe taking a a, a break from, you know, accepting requests for re-grading, certainly there may be some new positions or, or, you know, compelling requests for additional hours here and there, but sort of the run-of-the-mill, you know, my job has changed and I'm gonna write the, a novel here and you know, I think we do owe it to the employees to see that they're, you know, assure ourselves that they're being paid fairly, and we, we do that by surveying the marketplace periodically, and I think, you know, seven years is probably, it's probably time to do that again. I don't think, you know, I think we're gonna be, you know, pretty close to, to market. I don't think, generally speaking, that you know, we're low on, on the wage scale, but that's just a hunch, I think. We have a year in, year out, we go to 2% COLA, so we're not gonna be that far off, I think, you know, in about seven years. What the market place there, so we, you know, we'd find that out if we did.
You're using outside service or?
Yeah, we, 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 we would do that, to do the survey. Also, I'd ask the consultant, we talked about merit-based compensation plan to to look at how that might, if, if we're gonna kind of move away from COLAs year in, year out, that
Yeah.
we find a way to.
I mean, that should be part of it because.
That's tied into the evaluation process. I mean, I'm all for benchmarking, because you gotta do that, you know, inside the market, but you know, if the answer is we gotta, what's happened, I think the last time, when we did it seven years ago, was okay, there's 50K or whatever it was, of adjustments we had to make.
Yeah, it was like $200,000.
Yeah, it was significant.
It was a big number, right? We don't want to go over that.
No, if we're gonna look at it, we look at the whole compensation.
Right.
Well, we need to factor something into so it doesn't happen, then all of a sudden people start coming, oh, well, I want this adjustment, I want that, because that's what happened the last time, and it was just like Tim says, you know, people start playing this game, you know, and I I was kind of frustrated with Tim's thing earlier, not, not necessarily because of Kim or because of the position, right, but you know, four applications, one person's qualified, and that's the person we gotta run with. I'm not saying that they're not qualified, right, but, Jesus, how do we not get, you know, if we're paying competitively, how do we not get a bigger pool?
Well, I mean, I would say two things. One is it's a competitive labor.
Yeah.
Like, we're all facing that. The second thing is, to one of his other goals, I mean, big enough now. And, you know, God, God bless these guys for tackling those part-timers or unprincipled years, but we need, we need an HR person.
We do, we do. Right, no, that's, that's kind of my point, yeah.
You set the job description, you posted it the same way.
Yeah.
You have a vetting process, you know, you go through a process.
Yeah, no, exactly.
And so I don't, you know, I don't blame Kim.
No, 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 no.
Three people, one's qualified, you know, okay, but, I mean, it seemed to me she liked it, I mean, there's a couple of schools of thought. One school thought, which I actually mostly described to you, is if you find somebody you like.
Yeah, yeah.
Then go for it. But people say, you know what, don't ever like, just like you wouldn't put out the bid just to one vendor, right?
Right.
Don't do that unless you have something else to compare it to, but, you know, sometimes in this market, and we're mid-cycle, you're not exactly in the hiring season.
No, exactly, but I mean, you know, you probably know this, you know, I, I mean, we put a job posting out in January, you know, and it, it was June before we hired somebody. We interviewed I don't know how many people, right, or, you know, but but it's really about finding the right fit, and when we are gonna hire one person for a position for probably a decade plus, you know, we gotta make sure that it's the right person.
Also, but then you, I mean, that gets to a whole nother thing, which is the interview, that's why you really need a professional to help you, but
Yeah.
you know, do you have a 360 interview process?
Well, I, yeah, well, I, I, yeah, I mean, I think that stuff gets important, but, but also too, you know, like Kim said, you know, we're gonna train the person, right? She comes in with certain qualifications and you train the person for succession plan, you want to ma- make sure they don't succeed to Conker, right, which is what
But they might.
No, they might, right, and it's not, you know, I mean, you can't control that, but, you know, it's, it's certain things we need to.
That goes back to the wages.
Right, exactly.
You know, people want to feel like they contribute, they're valued and they're compensated.
And they have a way to.
It does, it does.
They have to increase their compensation and increase their skills and.
And we want to think about a policy about hiring diversity.
Well, that should definitely be included, yeah.
Do we have?
Do we know if any of the, the applicants that we've had are diver, you know, from
Well, see, but that's another thing, is like, nobody see, we never see that stuff, and not that we should necessarily be involved in a hiring process, but Yeah. Right, we should at least, you know, have that information.
Yeah.
So where does that all show up in these things? Hunted to the HR.
Sorry, yeah, we're kind of, we're kind of expanding your goal.
That's back up here where he says
Champion a new position.
Right, or lobby for new positions, assistant town administrator slash human resource.
I think you should start developing the job spec.
Yeah.
And you should definitely benchmark the other towns about who they have in a position and what qualifications.
Or is this, is this a position we share with another town?
Yeah, okay. What does Conker do?
They probably have an entire HR department.
They probably.
Yeah.
But actually, the personnel board.
They know a lot about the DEI stuff.
Yeah, they probably know about the DEI, and they probably know about, you know, harassment and this and that, and the other things that we need to be.
But even, even the personnel board, I mean, a couple of those are HR professionals, right?
Yeah.
You know, both of them, yeah, yeah, so, you know, I mean, even a good place to start.
Yeah.
So, Tim, if, if, your last, your last one here about the consultant, are you going to be able to hire that consultant in the next two weeks?
Well, it, it, it would depend on the, the size and scope of the study. I mean, if, if it's under $10,000, that could be it, it could be accomplished if it was a broader study and potentially, you know, it might take longer, you know, to advertise for. I, I'd like to use the consultant we used before, and if the proposal's reasonable, I, I would I'd be comfortable with them doing it.
Yeah, I think you should have an aggressive date in here, but one that you know, you know, even, you know, if you push yourself really hard, you're gonna be able to get it. But if you think that there isn't, you're not gonna be able to do two weeks, I would make that a timeline, you know, give yourself four weeks or something like that.
They have a date in there, but you're right, you know, that, that might be a little aggressive.
Make your goals achievable.
Change that to December.
I was gonna say December 15th for that.
It, it, yeah.
Um, Tim. So I'm thinking about the timing tonight on our agenda and also some of the suggestions and the one addition you made about the work at home policy, all of which I think is great. What if you just revise this based on our conversation tonight and provide us with a final version? Is this something that we need to formally approve?
I don't think we need to formally approve them, but I think it would be nice if we said to Tim, were able to say to Tim, yes, we agree that these are good, you know, these fit in with our goals, and we think this, these are good goals for you to work on. So, and we like the way.
I, I mean, I can't. My view from, from my split committee days is the lead administrator, Tim in this case, works closely with the chair. I think you two guys should mutually, you know, make sure it's in a form where you're happy with it.
Okay.
Present it again.
Sure.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. This is, um, I really appreciate
A lot of thought.
Getting this
Thank you.
Yeah, done, and we're working side by side on our goals. Let's go to the rest of your, to your town administrators' report.
Sure, not, not a whole lot in there this week. We did receive a request from the police union to initiate like a bargaining for a successor contract. This is the earliest we've ever been contacted to do so by the union. I don't, not sure what to make of that, but normally we start right after the first of the year with the, with the union. I suppose there's, there's no harm in putting a bargaining team together and, and getting started sooner rather than later.
I think the chief was interested in getting it off the ground.
Yeah.
Quickly as well.
That's fine. I, I just made one note about, in the past, we've had bargaining teams with two select board members, two FinCom members, and it, it sometimes makes scheduling bargaining sessions difficult. Usually the union brings in three officers and that's it. No attorneys on either side. They, they well, they, they don't particularly like our labor attorney, so we, we sit, sit this out, Nick, and we'll handle, you know, and things have gone much better, frankly, without.
Is he looking for a different labor attorney?
Oh, no, I think, I think he does, he, they just see red when Nick's in the room for some reason.
Good thing or bad?
I think, I think, well, I think it's a good thing, but but, yeah, I guess the point is, you know, that we come in with a big entourage sometimes, and I think it kind of you know, it, it doesn't always help, and I don't, we certainly don't need two FinCom members on the bargaining team. It, it just makes it it's always hard to find time for almost scheduling any meeting.
Why can FinCom be on that bargaining committee and not on the school bargaining committee? No way you should.
Oh, that's a good question.
I don't, I don't know that, I think it was just courtesy, the board extended to them at one point in time. Is it, are they specifically excluded?
Specifically excluded? Because they're gonna vote on the thing that I never understood, is they're voting on the thing that they're gonna pursue. Can you explore that?
Sure.
Come back and invite us in about. Yeah, so let's, just quickly, are people comfortable with just having one select board member and then one FinCom member on this team for us?
Maybe zero.
The larger question is, how do you want on the school? Usually a two, two, four of these on that.
Um, well, let's, let's take that up when we get there.
Or two out that would alternate, I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think alternation is the way to go.
Well, no.
Uh-uh.
No, I don't think so either.
But I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, so for, for now, Kate had, she had done this in the past, and she said she would be interested in being the select board rep, if we're all comfortable with that.
Comfortable with that. Okay, that's good. I, I think we ought to schedule some bargain, strategy sessions rather with the chief. I think sometimes we plunge headlong into the
Yeah.
negotiations, and we don't have a good idea from the chief what he's really or what is his goals are for the negotiations. We'll start with that.
Yeah, I would propose that we do that in the executive session as a group, just so that we're all on the same page as what's happening.
Did you say in an executive session?
Executive session in a group setting, yes.
Okay.
Do that strategy with the with P. Fisher, and then and then the actual negotiation is Kate.
Yep, that makes sense.
And I would say that it would, that would be with this group and whomever else we have on the on the team, if we're doing, so if we did not do a a FinCom member, then we should have two members.
Yeah.
I think it's good to have a FinCom member because.
I think, I'm, I'm not trying to disprove him, I'm not suggesting that either, yeah, but.
Yeah, because they're, they're kind of like the first one.
Why they're not, maybe, maybe the other one is just poplaric and has no merit. In other words, FinCom should be in this.
Yeah.
And so, Tim, will you reach out to the FinCom to see
Sure.
who they'd like to have participate?
Yeah, I think, if they could only have one, I think Jim Dar would do it again, because he's, he'd like to be part of it, but
Yeah.
I will track down if there's.
Victor is the liaison.
All right, to that. Oh, he is, okay.
Yeah, that's another option. Okay.
All right, thank you. And the next item, we, we now have office hours for our veteran service officer, Gina Rada, who we share with Bedford and Lexington. Going forward, Gina will be at town hall Wednesdays from nine to 12. For any veteran that wants to discuss anything of, you know, confidential or non-confidential nature, we will have, you know, space for her to discuss those matters in private with veterans. We, we only have one veteran currently receiving benefits. That doesn't mean that there aren't veterans out there that could qualify or are unaware of programs, and
Yeah.
people should be, you know, should take advantage of the service, frankly.
How is she paid? Is she paid a VA or a child?
The three, the three communities split it. Population-based, we're about 10% of the district, I guess.
Does it make sense to try to push out some information that, that, that she's available and what her services
Sure, no, I do.
Maybe something to the mosquito and, I don't know, something on the town website or maybe through the COA?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, otherwise people would know.
Okay, and then, anything else, Tim, that has come up?
No, I think that the upcoming agenda is there, but I think it's changed since then, so we'll, we'll talk about that Thursday, I guess. We did have the police and fire coming in to talk about their goals for the year. I don't know if that's.
Well, we're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to rework this.
I think we have to rework this.
Yeah, okay.
Now we got an hour for, an hour to talk about tilting at the cable windmills.
Yeah. Okay. So, is there anything in particular, though, that any of the other select board members want to make sure we cover at the meeting two weeks from tonight?
Um, I kind of like to know whether you are gonna do the police or the fire departmental goals, because I'd like to be able to, as liaison.
Work with them, yeah.
Work with the chief. At least alert him so the.
Yeah, right, they'll need a heads up.
Yeah, you know.
I mean, we might be able to do one of them, but I don't see us being able to do both. How about Thursday, after, we, we will meet, Tim and David, and I and Jen will meet Thursday morning, and you'll let me know, and that's when we.
I'll let them know anyway that, that this is coming up in the next, okay. Four to six weeks, right?
And the same thing for Ryan, right?
Yeah, well, communications too, I think I'm that liaison as well.
Is that dispatch? Is that what that?
Yes, yeah.
So for our next meeting, I, I will only be there for the Comcast part of it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We will have a dog hearing on the 28th.
Yeah, so one thing we need to know about that is just what our options are, what our authority is, right? Maybe just a little memo from you.
I've got some of that, yes.
On that, okay.
And, and.
And, and with that, are we actually the authority? Because there, there are definitions, well, I see MGL 140, right? You know, so there, there are state statutes on that, right? And, I mean, they're pretty clear, you know?
Yeah, Town Council's been working with us on that. There are a number of, there's a range of things that the board can recommend, you know, confinement to.
Is this the dog that we got a letter about?
Well, I think it's a different dog.
Yeah, there's two different ones.
There's a hiker at the state park and so other people.
Oh, this is the one, the state park one.
Are we only hearing about the state park this time or both?
No, just state park.
Having the dog officer.
Carlisle Dog and Carlisle resident got injured. Okay. And the transfer station task force wants to come and update the board and also get a little input on a couple of questions that they're grappling with. So they're on here. And then, Luke, do you want to prepare something or work with somebody here on cemetery fees? Do you want to just more talk generally about it than go from there?
Yeah, essentially talk generally about it, because I mean, there's a hundred dollar fee, but what, there's a, there's another fee.
Perpetual care.
The perpetual care fee.
Right, yeah, we, we gathered some information from area communities and what the funds are available here in Carlisle to spend.
Yeah.
How much time do you need?
Cemetery, maybe half an hour. Well, I mean, no, but part of it too is, you know, I, I think this is a, a pretty straightforward one, you know, we don't necessarily have to come up with a new fee, but it's like, you know, there are expenses that, that the cemetery has. I mean, one of the things is this whole tractor thing, right? And, you know, if we're not even covering enough to get a new tractor, the, the one that they have now is from the 60s, you know, then we need to reevaluate. I mean, we are, we are significantly lower, at least I know with the initial fee, you know, than a lot of other.
A lot of communities, it, it's a thousand dollars for bury a lot.
Let's not have it, it's 10 o'clock.
No, right.
We're having a hearing right now.
No, but.
Half an hour, we got it.
Okay, David, hang on, yeah, just hang on.
But, but no, but this is the whole point of it, you know, at least get the, get the conversation started and see exactly, you know, exactly where we can go with this.
So we'll have a sort of an introductory conversation. All right, that sounds good.
And then, at, at which we would then decide whether or not we had a hearing.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah.
Okay. And then we will, once we've met on Thursday, we'll, we'll let everybody know that's about the things that are gonna be on that agenda and whether police and fire communications will be on it or not. Okay, great. Let's quickly look at the minutes.
Oh, I move, approve the minutes.
That's on page 189 of your packet. Have it up on you? Oh, you don't have the, I'm looking at it this way.
I, I have mine on, okay. I, I move, we approve the minutes of Tuesday, August 31st, 2021.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so I got a comment here in down, I don't know what page it is, but it's on the Juneteenth thing. At its last meeting, the board requested to know the town rate cost of the holiday, which is approximately 60K per accountant. And then it moves on and we voted. But in fact, we talked about it and determined that it was only like a quarter of that that really mattered, right? Because the teachers don't get it, they're gone by then, and the police get it anyway. So shouldn't the minutes reflect? I don't want later someone, oh, you know, the select board, the fact is we determined it was a lot less, right?
Yeah, there was an email that came in though, right? So we can attach the email as a.
So would we parenthetically make that note? Just note further review determined that the cost was, you know, when that email said?
Yeah, or just say, you know, see, see, attach the email for subsequent discussion or something. I don't think we should change the 60,000 number because that's what the accountant said, but.
I agree.
Yeah, that would be one sort of footnote, I guess, that gets added to these minutes.
The parenthetical explanation.
Yeah, Jen, is that how you'd handle? Okay, great. All right, any other comments on the minutes? All righty, let's take a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Arnold, aye?
House for the law.
Brown, aye?
Red, aye?
Red, aye.
All right, excellent. That passes unanimously. And then the warrants, you just take a look at those, we don't have to vote on them. They're just above the minutes.
Nathan, which direction are you traveling in, in two weeks from now? I mean.
I'm, I'm hoping to be traveling east, but I'm keeping my eye on it closely, but hoping to go to Ireland for just four or five days.
Okay, so there'll be, you'll be like, what is it, five hours ahead?
Yeah, I think I'll be four, four or five hours ahead, yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking so that they are aware of it when they plan their executive session.
Yes, thank you.
Earlier in the evening is better for you.
Yeah, because otherwise you've got the.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
We would do it and then break for executive and then.
Yeah, I mean, now if you were going to Japan or China or something, it would be a whole different kettle of fish.
I probably wouldn't be saying I would join.
No, okay.
All right, everyone. I would like to end our meeting by calling for a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Roll call vote, Arnold, aye?
House for the law.
Brown, aye?
Red, aye?
Red, aye. Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Mark from Minuteman and Jen, thank you very much.
Hi, Nathan.
And to our very diligent mosquito reporter, Mary Lynn. Hi, Mary Lynn, thank you.